All right. Welcome to our March 5th regular Board of Supervisors meeting. And we shall begin today with a moment of silence. And I asked, and I don't believe anyone else has a moment of silence today. So there was something that occurred. This was a while back, but it's something that's been on my mind and wanted to hold on to it to express concerns that occur every single day in our daily lives. And this was brought up because of loss of life of first responders in Minnesota where two officers and a paramedic showed up to a domestic violence case. And these are cases that our officers deal with and our first responders deal with on a unfortunately daily basis. And those are some of the most dangerous calls that they can go to, very high emotions during those calls. And unfortunately, those three individuals in Minnesota lost their lives when trying to go there and trying to de-escalate the situation. And I just want to hold our first responders in our hearts, in our thoughts and prayers. They are always taking risks to try and help keep our communities safe and de-escalate situations. And we need to be mindful and aware of those risks that they are taking for all of us. And I just want to hold those three individuals, Paul M. Strand, Matthew Rouge, and Adam Finseth, in our hearts and prayers for today. Vice Chair Crandall, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. And are there any extra items to be added to the agenda today from staff or board members?
There is none.
And seeing none from the board as well. So then we will move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled? I believe we have one item. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, 5.3, please.
Okay, we'll go ahead and pull item 5.3 and have further discussion later. Any other items?
Please pull 5.12, please.
5.12 for further discussion or for future agenda?
For further discussion, there's a typo.
Okay, perfect. We'll go ahead and take care of that. If that is all from the board, I will open it up for the public. Are there any items the public wishes to pull from our consent agenda? I see none in our chambers and none in Zoom. So I'll bring it back with the exception of item 5.3 and 5.12 to the board.
We have to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items 5.3 and 5.12.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. And let's go ahead and open item 6.1, our public input. Is there any public input for anything not related to an item on the agenda but related to our jurisdiction? See no hands on Zoom. And I see one from our county council, Mr. Guintivano.
Morning, members of the board. Lloyd Guintivano, County Council. I just wanted to take this time to do a brief introduction to your board. Couple of you may have met her already, but our office recently hired Ms. Pamela Sandberg as our new deputy county council, and she is present here. Just wanted to make that introduction to the board to welcome her as well.
Welcome to the team. Would you like to make any statements? Or today's not the day. Don't mean to put you on the hot seat.
Just wanted to say I'm glad to be here and so grateful for the warm welcome I've received from everyone. So look forward to working with everyone.
You as well. Thank you. Any other public comment? And seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. We're gonna go ahead and push our pet of the week a little further in our agenda. So we're gonna move on to our 6.3, 9:04 a.m. presentation of proclamation designating the week of March 10th through the 16th, 2024, as All AmeriCorps Week in Lake County. And Vice Chair Crandall will go ahead and make the presentation. Please come on up.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Tammy, for working with me on this. I know Tammy comes to a lot of the town halls in the, I think around the county, to be honest. But I know in my district, I see her there, and she mentioned this, and I was like, yes, let's do it. So, oops, and I'm messing up the procl-. There we go. So this proclamation is designating the week of March 10th through the 16th, 2024, as All AmeriCorps Week in Lake County. Whereas service is hallmark of American character and has the unique ability to bring people of all backgrounds together in common cause. And throughout our history, citizens have stepped up to meet our most pressing challenges of the day by volunteering in their communities. Whereas AmeriCorps and AmeriCorps Seniors programs provide opportunities for more than 200,000 Americans to serve their country through service at nonprofits, schools, public agencies, and community and faith-based groups across the country. And whereas in the County of Lake, many AmeriCorps members and AmeriCorps seniors volunteer of diverse ages and backgrounds, help to meet various local needs by responding to community cleanups around the lakes, supporting veterans and military families, canvassing and traffic flagging in the communities to assist with fuels mitigation and evacuation routes, planning or preparedness huddles, participating in NeighborFest events to promote preparedness, helping neighborhoods to be ready for disasters as well as climate resiliency, and promotion of restoration of the environment, assisting seniors with meals and mentoring students at schools through the Foster Grandparent Program. And whereas AmeriCorps members and AmeriCorps seniors volunteers encourage collaboration and partnerships, leveraging millions of volunteers in service and acquiring the support of business foundation and other local partners to increase the effectiveness of their initiatives. And whereas AmeriCorps and AmeriCorps Seniors programs bring people together across race, age, and zip code to address critical issues facing the country, forge relationships, and cultivate mutual respect, and help build resilient and thriving communities. And whereas AmeriCorps members and AmeriCorps seniors volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas through the service, AmeriCorps members and AmeriCorps senior volunteers strengthen the lives of their families, communities, and the County of Lake. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Lake County Board of Supervisors proclaims next week, March 10th through the 16th, 2024 AmeriCorps Week in Lake County to recognize the dedication and commitment of more than 1.2 million Americans. Passed and adopted this fifth day of March 2024, signed, Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Bruno Sabatier.
Would you like to say anything? All right.
So I just want to thank everybody and thank the board for recognizing this special event. We in Lake County have been, our I in Lake County have been a part of AmeriCorps in different capacities. And North Coast Opportunities has been, had Senior Corps for a long time. We just, two years ago, were able to get what we call the CIRC team. That's who's here today. They are the California Emergency Response Corps team. All of the great things they said, I won't go through them again. But these ladies right here have been out in the field, getting dirty, getting people prepared, and making sure that everybody is safe when that disaster does happen. I would like them to just give a few words about their experience. Amanda Collins is our second-year member and kind of leads the pack, so I'll leave it to her.
Hi, my name's Amanda Collins. This is my second term for CIRC AmeriCorps, and it's been a great opportunity. I started actually as a NCO New Diggs client for the housing program, and they recommended me to the CIRC program. And I'm very thankful for it. I wouldn't have my house without it. I wouldn't be growing as a person and being able to learn about the community and meet all these great people and help them prepare better for disasters and emergencies as well.
I'm a first-year member.
My name's Amanda Sampson. I'm a first-year member. I really enjoy working within the community and seeing all the people and learning more about my community and just helping people get more prepared. It's, I like bringing a smile on people's faces.
I do this for my kids, to teach them to be a part of our community, because there's not enough people part of our community anymore. So I'm happy to be a part of all of it. And I thank Tammy for bringing us all together.
I'm a first, this is my first term as well. Last week, we went and helped Citizens Caring for Clear Lake clean up a site. And we just do a lot of good for the community, and I'm really excited to continue on and do more stuff and help people.
My name is Dawn Kennedy, and I'm a first year as well. I'm just really happy to be here, and it's good to help all the people in the community. And I'm waiting, I'm excited to see what we can do for the community and hopefully we'll be all ready for the next disaster that strikes.
I just also want to say that we are always looking for people that want to take the CERT class, which is the Community Emergency Response Team. That's one training all of these ladies are either in the process or have gone through. And then we also have our NeighborFest events, which are basically a block party to promote preparedness. I have to have at least six of them before May 31st. So if you're interested in bringing your community together and you're a community leader, please come and see me. I have some flyers here, and we'd love to help make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming up and saying something. That means a lot. It really does. And for also volunteering. You know, a lot of people, they simply just bark in the dark, but you are being the light in the dark, if you will. You're taking your time to show people, let's do something, let's lend a hand, let's see what we can do, rather than just, you know, barking, right? Thank you.
So Tammy, thank you for bringing so many different AmeriCorps teams to our county. We, this is a volunteer force that, you know, we, there's so much we can't do as a government that we need that support from the volunteers. And through all the different programs AmeriCorps offers, we have been supported with Vista, we've been supported with Sparks. Hopefully, we'll get someone from the, in N-triple-C and the climate, the new climate program. So there's a lot out there. There's people across our country that are signing up for this service, a year of service, and it's incredible. We benefit locally here tremendously. But, and Tammy is always bringing these teams to us through NCO, and so thank you for that. But this team, this CIRC team, you're all local. Yes. And so you're, you've grown up in these communities, and your service is going to stay local. And then with the training, you're going to transition into some really great jobs, and you're going to be keeping this work alive here in our county. So thank you all for stepping up for this year of service. It's incredible, and we're so grateful. We're so grateful for you stepping up and doing this and providing a good example to your children, because this is the kind of service that inspires other people to step up. So thank you.
Are there any other comments from board members?
You know, obviously throughout all the disasters, where I became familiar with AmeriCorps and the hard work that's being done, obviously the CIRC team is so important here to be prepared for disasters. Yeah, I'm on, I think. Nope.
You're on, on.
It's on, though. Anyway, I'm gonna keep talking anyway. So just the great work, you know, throughout the disasters, we saw multiple AmeriCorps teams come through, help rebuild the homes of people that were devastated, you know, and many different organizations, help with our, you know, community dinners, you know, and many other things, Middletown Days, especially in the southern end of the county. So just want to thank you for that. And yeah, the service you do for our communities definitely inspires folks. It's inspired me to see how to reach out and help other folks, too. So thank you very much.
Any other comments? So I know that you've done a lot of work with CC4C. It was mentioned earlier. I believe that might have been connected because they were with NCO at one point or another, but they are absolutely always talking about the work they do with AmeriCorps. You're cleaning up our communities. What you are, as what I see it, is you complement other work that's already happening. You help it cross the finish line. And absolutely, it is needed. It is something we need to continue and support, and thank you so much for doing all of that. I see you all out there, especially on MLK, for his birthday on a day of volunteering. That, to me, is a highlight of seeing the amount of AmeriCorps folks that are out in our communities, doing work, helping our communities be better communities. So thank you so much for the work, and thank you for the support for NCO for making this happen and bringing this to our community. And if that's it, we will take a picture.
Oh, thank you. What a cooperative group here. Okay. And let's do one more? Okay, great.
And now we're gonna go backwards a little bit on our agenda, and we have Officer Copas for our pet of the week.
Mr. Chair, I meant no offense to our pet of the week about barking in the dark. We really want, we really want him to do that. Or her, sorry.
Good morning. My name is Caitlin Murray. I'm Officer Murray. Today, we have Frankie, a 10-year-old healer mix. He does really great with other dogs. He'd be great in any home. He, he even has a very cute little smile when you pet him and when he gets excited. He also knows basic commands like sit and shake. So if you'd like to meet him or any of our adoptable pets, we're located at 4949 Hellbush Drive, and our phone number is 707-263-0278. Also, we are doing free microchips today for dogs only at the moment, and that's going on until 10:30. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Officer Murray. All right, we are gonna move on to our 6.4, and we are going to come together as the Housing Commission, and we're gonna need Deborah Figaroa to come up to the dais. And I believe that Supervisor Simon will come down, and you can come right here. You want to take your nade with you? Thank you for joining us. So sitting as the Lake County Housing Commission, approve First Amendment to the Regulatory Agreement and Declaration of Restrictive Covenants for the Permanent Local Housing Allocation, PLHA program, and authorize the chair to sign. And taking the lead on this is Behavioral Health Director, Director Jones.
Yes, good morning, board. Thank you. So this is related to the Collier Avenue Permanent Supportive Housing Project. It's an amendment, as I understand it, required by the funder, which I believe PLHA comes through HCD. It's obviously a project with a lot of braided funding. I understand there's a question about what happens after the 55 years. I don't have an answer yet for that, but I have reached out to RCHDC for clarification. So that's what I know.
Thank you for that. And just to clarify, that was a question that I had. From what I understand, this is meant to be a 55, possibly 57-year deferral of the loan payments. But within the loan payments, when I was reading through the document, I can't find a payment plan, a number of years, or things like that. And so I don't want to slow anything down, because especially, we know that they are almost done, if not done, with the building over in, on Collier Avenue. And so I want to make sure that I will move to approve today, or I'm going to approve today, but I would like to get that to, let us know what exactly those details are, because those details are important, in my opinion. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's open it up for public comment. I see no hands in the chamber and no hands on Zoom, and bringing it back to the board for action.
Not in further ado, approve the First Amendment to the Regulatory Agreement and Declaration of Restrictive Covenants for the Permanent Local Housing Allocation, PLHA program, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
He stole it.
Oh, wait, no. She can second.
No worries. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and, let's take care of some of those items that we pulled. I believe, let's start with item 5.3. Actually, if you don't mind, can we, Director Jones, could we take your item 5.13, I believe it was?
12.
I apologize. 5.12. Approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement between County of Lake and June Wilson-Clarkin, LMFT, for Specialty Mental Health Services and the amount of $50,000 for fiscal year 2024, and authorize the board chair to sign. Director Jones.
Yes, and I appreciate Admin for bringing this. Well, I wish we had caught it before, but here we are. So thank you for catching that. So on investigation, it appears that the original agreement, which was approved by this board, was a total contract maximum of $30,000. However, it, in the compensation section where it spells out the dollar amount, that was incorrect. So there's an error we found in the original. However, moving forward with the total compensation being $30,000 and wanting to move to an increased total compensation of $50,000, it should read an increase of only $20,000 for a total compensation of 50. Of course, for clarification, Ms. June, she is a licensed therapist, and she provides specialty mental health services that are fully reimbursable by Medicaid. And we refer to her because she has some specialization in services that she does, and also we can't internally serve everybody. We do contract out services. And also, some people come in requesting that, and we have to honor their choice. So that's the reason for the contract. But it should read an increase of $20,000 for a total compensation of $50,000.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from board members? Let's open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands in Zoom and no one approaching the mic in the chamber. Bringing it back to the board for action. We have a question or comment from County Council.
In light of Director Jones's comments, so your board may make a motion to approve the amendment with the following change, and that would be on the third recital, by just deleting the phrase "by," quote unquote, "by $30,000." I think that should resolve the issues raised by Director Jones, such that, as amended, your board may move to approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement between County of Lake and June Wilson-Clarkin, LMFT, for Specialty Mental Health Services for fiscal year 2023-24, as amended.
Thank you for the help on that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Simple enough. Thank you very much. Now let's go ahead and do our 5.3. Approve Continuation of an Emergency Declaration for Drought Conditions, and I believe this was pulled by Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. I think we were anticipating get a staff report on this next month, but I did receive a request that we accept some public comment on this. And also, as long as we're gonna do that, I wanted to make sure that if we are gonna have a later staff presentation, we give clear direction that it should be related to the existence or the nonexistence of a drought emergency as listed in this proclamation, not precluding any longer-term discussions about drought preparedness or what have you. But this is an emergency proclamation that dates back three years. The governor's office rescinded most of its drought emergency regulations a year ago by means of executive order N-5-23, signed March 24th, 2023. And Johanna and I have a small PDF, if you can pull that up. It's only about three slides. So it's hard to prove a negative, but the best place I looked for last night was from our own website, drought.gov. Next slide, please. All right, so the drought monitor conditions, you can see on that, there is a small band of yellow on the east side of the Sierra slope that has abnormally dry conditions. That's nothing resembling a drought. And within Lake County proper, there's nothing indicating that there's any type of drought or pre-drought conditions currently in Lake County. And the data set on this is about a week old, I believe February 27th is this data. Next slide, please. 30-day precip shows we're either at normal or slightly above normal throughout the county. And that data set is as of the 5th, I believe, of March. And next slide. And this shows a 30-day temperature mean, showing we're either exactly at normal for the historical average over the last 30 years, or one to three degrees warmer. So that's our own state's drought monitoring mechanism. It shows no state of drought presently in Lake County. And so for the purpose of our emergency proclamation, although it was important three years ago to get on board and pass that proclamation, and definitely some stuff happened premised on that emergency proclamation three years ago, that may or may not deserve a fresh look. I'm gonna suggest, next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry. And also, the lake is pretty darn full. I think we're at eight or just over eight. This was Sunday during the bass tournament. You'll see a little bit of snow on the mountains, full lake, plenty of happy bass fishermen, doesn't really meet drought conditions to me. So although we can wait for a staff presentation next month, if this board so desires, next slide, please. My suggestion would be, let's just, let's just call it good. There's no drought as far as the state's concerned, and I don't think there's any drought as far as our local community should be concerned. And that's it. And I'll leave it at that for now. If there is any public comment, this would be a good time for it.
Just a quick question. Would you like to express some of the statements that were shared from our Water Resources?
Just that they've been working hard with flooding and other things right now. If there is any clarity, I believe the last communication I had from Mr. DeLeone was anticipating a broader presentation on all things drought. I think it should be narrowly focused to whether we continue passing this emergency proclamation every 30 days. Again, I'm very interested in hearing things about drought preparedness. There may be things we need to do for our climate resiliency action plan that does involve some actions that this board may take for a more permanent regulation, but what I'd like to do is get us off the emergency footing. So I don't know if Mr. DeLeone is available to clarify his comments, but I know Sheriff Howe isn't training, and OES didn't really have anything to offer today.
So I'm just gonna paraphrase what was in the email, that there are potential funding sources that are still applied based on the drought situation in the sense of preparation for future droughts, but yet still utilizing the emergency drought declaration. And that, looking, continuing to seek funding, including, I believe, what we signed to move forward with for Lake Pillsbury with the Department of Water Resources, that was a drought-related grant that we are looking to obtain. grant that we are looking to obtain. I think we just submitted the application. I don't know that it's been approved yet, but so, just wanted to at least iterate some of the comments made by Water Resources, that there are things still linked to the drought in the sense of funding, possibly reimbursement based on the work that has to be done that we've been requested to do. And definitely, I mean, you look at some of the other proclamations, we have the snowstorm from 2023. The snowstorm from 2023 is over, but it's a matter of keeping things open. Cal OES tells us to keep it open in order for access to funds or reimbursement to be able to occur. So, I just want to make that clear, both to all of us and to the general public, that just because we have a declared emergency that continues, that doesn't mean that the actual imminent emergency itself is still occurring. It means that we are still in the midst of reimbursement, getting grants and working on future resiliency for the county. So, I'll stop there and see if there's any other comments from board members.
No, I was going to say the same thing. We have several emergencies that we have to keep going even though the event is over, like the low-level snow and winter storms. And it is, can be confusing to people that we have funding and we have projects and we have things that are ongoing. That is the reason why we need to keep this open. And I, you know, until we have our, all of our staff completely vet all of the things that we're looking for, we need to keep this here, including the tree mortality disaster because we haven't even yet started that work. And that relies on CDA funding that is tied to drought. So, without a presentation from OES and Water Resources and understanding, you know, all, everything that touches this, this emergency and the ramifications for ending it, you know, I don't have any interest in, in not approving this again today.
And you mentioned the tree mortality, and I believe, yeah, I'm looking right now at the hitch emergency that says existence of a local emergency due to persistent drought. And so, maybe there would be impact on that emergency as well if there was a termination of the drought emergency. Just, things are connected, maybe not as directly as it seems, but it would be something that I would like to know, what would that impact be if this was terminated? Any other comments? Supervisor Green?
Just, I understand fully what you're talking about. This is not like a wildfire where we're sucking a bunch of FEMA funds out in direct relief. Even with the proclamation being supportive of some ongoing requests for funding, those efforts can't be in and of themselves the justification for the drought proclamation. The, the conditions for drought either exist or they don't. And if you were to say, amend it to say, you know, for the time period up till now, yeah, it's a drought and we fully reserve every right to get any funding recap we can out of that. But just letting emergency proclamations ride for three years on end in the middle of flooding, I don't need a lot of additional input from staff necessarily, because I don't think if we rescind the emergency proc the day, that is in any way going to hamper any, any of those funding efforts that you're talking about. Now, if you want to hear chapter and verse from staff, I get it, but we're also burdening staff by asking them to do that. So, I'll just leave it at that.
I, I feel like that's your perception, but there's a lot of money on the line. There's a lot of projects on the line, and we need to be very sure how we move forward. We can't jeopardize any of these projects, including the tree project that we've been working on for three years. So, there is a lot here. In all of these disasters, the event ends and there are still things that carry on. And it might seem annoying to you, but this is, you know, how we have to move forward.
Any further comments or questions? I'm going to open it up for public comment. Please come on up to the microphone. You have three minutes.
I live in Lake County. I, I agree with Mr. Green that on the surface, it looks like there's no more drought. But underneath is all the money that's supporting the repairs that occurred during the drought. And there are still things that need to be done to recover from the drought. And Jessica, Brenna, everybody, you really said it. There's ongoing projects due to what happened at the drought that need to be finished. And that's why the effects of the emergency are still an emergency. Thank you. I just wanted to put my two cents worth in. You have to look at both, all sides of the coin, but you do have to explain it. And I agree that it's not a consent agenda item. It's a public relations item. Did this happen because of the drought and the funding is still coming and it's still due? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Please come on up.
A little bit taller than Joan. Rebecca Harper, Lake County Farm Bureau. I'd like to start out by saying, I don't find it confusing, and I also don't feel that this is the way we have to move forward. I agree with Michael, and I understand that there's potential funding sources available, but I'm kind of tired of hearing there are potential, potential funding sources available without hearing what exactly those funding sources are. That sounds like we're not necessarily doing our due diligence or our research, but more of an excuse to, to keep this going. And if there are funding sources that rely on this, I'd like to hear, what are they? What stage are they in? Or are we just saying, you know, there's potential funding sources related to this? I, I don't know. I think that's a bit of a scapegoat. Clearly, we're not in emergency drought conditions, and of course, I agree that funding is important. If we can get extra funding into the community, obviously, that's a positive impact of this proclamation. But there are also negative impacts that we don't necessarily talk about. One of those being increased permitting requirements for, for some folks related to drought conditions. Another one of those being jurisdictional changes in how we look at water use, which is currently impacting our community and not necessarily rightfully so. So, I think those things need to be considered as well. Is, does potential, potential, not currently existing, does potential funding outweigh negative impacts that continuing this drought emergency proclamation has? I don't know. But I would like to see this proclamation ended. I think we're not currently in a state of drought. And if we haven't been able to secure funding from this proclamation in the last three years, when, when will we be able to? Will we be able to at all? I'm not sure. But I think there needs to be more definitive, a more definitive presentation on what those impacts are, if, if that's going to be the excuse for continuing the proclamation. Otherwise, if, if we're not able to do that, and we haven't been able to do that for the last few continuances, then I don't see any, any need to continue the proclamation further.
Appreciate the comment, and there has been a plan for, on our April meeting, I don't know if it's the first week of April, but I believe it's supposed to be the first week of April, that there will be a presentation to describe some of these connections, and then at that point, making a full-blown decision whether to terminate or continue based on that information.
Yeah.
So, that we, we are moving forward to have those conversations so we can make sure it's needed or not needed, but we're making sure to give staff time to be able to put all that together and be able to bring that to us.
Yeah, I understand. I guess the issue is, we really haven't been in a drought since last winter. So, we've been saying there's potential funding for, over the past year and haven't had that presentation yet. So, April's great, it'll come soon enough, but, but I just think we aren't experiencing drought conditions. If you live on the other side of the lake, you can drive by and see lots of property damage occurring doing, due to flooding conditions. So, it's, it's just a little bit concerning to me that we have both of those things going on and no, no real quantitative evaluation on if, if we've had funding or what that potential impact has been, and we're still putting that off another month when, when we've been out of drought emergency conditions for over a year.
And I'll add on top of this presentation that we are expecting and that we've asked for, we need to see how it will affect other proclamations. Like I mentioned, the tree mortality, we made that emergency in 2022. And it has, we still have not received funding for that project, and that is tens of millions of dollars to get those dead trees out, down out of our county right of ways. And so, that is something that we've been working on, and it is slow. It is a slow, hard process. And so, just ending the drought proclamation today could have effects on that without us taking a look at how they're connected. And when we do have this presentation in March, we can evaluate, how can we maybe change the proclamations so that enough, no work will, so that we don't have any problems going forward, we don't have any work halted or, or lose those, those funding opportunities? So, that is just one of the major funding opportunities that I've been working on for three years. I just, I cannot let anything happen to that until we have this comprehensive conversation and figure out all of our different emergencies and how they're connected. And so, that's why I'm very firm on this today.
Yeah, I understand. And like I said, I don't want to see us lose out on any potential funding. Maybe the answer is restructuring the way that the proclamations are written, but I think we've been moving towards analyzing things on a scientific basis, especially when it comes to endangered species in our area. So, to see the scientific basis for drought conditions ignored for monetary conditions is really frustrating. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to pause at this moment in time. We seem to have some technical issues, and I want to make sure that if there's further comments or deliberations on this, that it's heard by the public. So, we're going to take a five-minute break. Do we need it to be 10? Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. So, we will come back at 9:53 so that we can make sure everyone's hearing this conversation. Thank you for your patience. We've resolved our technical difficulties. We are going to continue our public comment, and I know there's a repeat for a public comment, but want to make sure that everyone gets heard at least their first time prior to doing repeats. Anyone else have a comment on this item? Seeing none, Joan, if you want to come back up and give your brief statement?
Joan Moss, I want to comment that the, that the ordinance says drought conditions. It doesn't say continuation of emergency declaration for drought conditions. It doesn't say for drought. It means that the conditions caused by the drought still exist and have not been solved, and it's, it's meritorious to apply for funding to help for them. We're not saying there's still a drought. We're saying that there's still drought conditions that need financial aid from various agencies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, let's go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board. Do we have Director De Leone that wanted to speak on this or make a comment?
Good morning, Board. Scott De Leone. No, I don't really have anything else to add. The email that I sent out yesterday with, with the comments about, you know, the, the potential for funding, you read most of it. The, the department will have a presentation later next month, and I think it's premature to end the proclamation at this point, but that's just my opinion. And we'll, we'll do whatever the board chooses to do. That's about all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pasca.
Yeah, Scott, are you, who's, who's taking the lead on that presentation? Is it Water Resources? Because it seems like the conversation should include Admin and the Auditor's Office too, and OES, make sure that we're not going to miss anything.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons why we asked for, the time that we asked for, is not a simple presentation, because you're right, all of those departments and other outside agencies are going to need to be involved. I see Director Turner has her name. I, I think it also applies to, to things in community development. So, it's, you know, it's a, it's a complicated report. And so, we, yes, I would anticipate all the agencies that you just mentioned and perhaps more will, will have some part of that presentation or something to add to that presentation.
And then, given Rebecca Harper's comments about impacts to fees, I think that's an important piece of information to also look at so that we can see how this is impacting the agriculture community and other people, other folks in the community. So, is that, would that be?
Well, that, you know, that's the first I've heard of that, and perhaps Ms. Harper would like to come up or get ahold of me and share some of those impacts. And we can certainly try to address those in the presentation.
Okay, so, did you say that CDD?
Yeah, it's not necessarily fees.
I'm sorry.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Sure.
Sorry.
Yeah, so, I was talking about like permit application requirements that are related to drought, such as hydrology studies and, and other drought-based permitting requirements, not necessarily fees. There may be additional fees that exist, but that isn't necessarily what I was referencing. And I believe most of those would be within CDD, some of which apply to cannabis. I'm not sure, but I know some do apply to cannabis as well.
There was an urgency ordinance for hydrology reports to be provided. That was in the midst of the drought as well, and that is still.
Existing, right.
In existence and would disappear upon the release of the drought emergency.
Okay, cool. So, and then the other thing that I was referencing was jurisdictional changes. So, for example, State Water Resource Control Board does not have authority over groundwater unless emergency drought conditions exist. So, we're one of two counties declared by the state that has emergency drought conditions still existing. I believe the rightful end of this proclamation may help alleviate some of that. So, again, emergency drought conditions constitute some other agencies, specifically state agencies, having authority over water uses that they do not regularly have authority over. So, that's the real foundation of why this is so important. If there is not a true emergency, emergency drought, then the proclamation should be ended, and maybe we can find some auxiliary way to keep fund, potential funding sources alive. But those state agencies that regulate based off of emergency authority, they don't look at the proclamation and say, oh, well, you know, they're, they're just looking for funding and ignore it and, you know, go about their regular jurisdiction. So, I think that's really important as well, and that's it.
Thank you. We have Director Turner from CDD Community Development Department.
Thank you. Yes, I, I think it would be appropriate for Community Development to also join in the report with Water Resources and Public Works. As, as the chair has stated, there are a couple ordinances that do link the drought to hydrology studies. However, if that declaration was removed, the department still has full authority to request the studies that it sees appropriate. And so, I think that that does warrant further discussion. Supervisor Green and I have been chatting about that lately. So, it just, I think it would help for us to join Water Resources in that report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just to be clear, I appreciate staff's willingness to bring it back. So, again, not opposed in any way to taking prudent and reasonable actions related to drought resiliency, climate change, adaptability, whatever you want to call it, but those things fall short of the emergency. So, in 2021, we declared a drought emergency. On top of that, we did, premised on the then-state of drought emergency declared at the local level. We passed a couple of local ordinances that continue to have impacts based on the premise that a drought emergency exists. And it's not self-executing. Those ordinances aren't going to fall away just because we end the drought proclamation. So, I, I just think when we do come back, it is going to be important not just to connect the dots on any potential funding streams that you think this drought emergency proclamation is still delivering, but also to educate ourselves and staff and the general public about what buckets of money that are out there that don't require an emergency proclamation to tap into. And it seems like in this growing emphasis on climate adaptability, some of those buckets of money are where we should be focusing our efforts on as opposed to trying to pin the tail on a never-ending drought emergency. But I look forward to the direction the staff are going to give here today.
So, you mentioned in your introduction to this item to clarify what, what we're looking from staff in order to make our decision. So, I'd like to list a couple of different items. One, I think we need to look at what grants are we either currently going after or currently have obtained that would be impacted by this? We need to get a yes or no answer, or try to get a yes or no answer. If this goes away, this declared. If this goes away, this declared emergency, does it prohibit us, prohibit us from continuing to access funds that we have already been approved for? Or does it prohibit us to continue to try and access funds that we're seeking currently for other declared emergencies that we have, such as the tree mortality or the hitch? We need to understand the impacts of the ordinances going away, because there are ways to cancel ordinances or change ordinances, because maybe that's one other way of dealing with the permitting issues. So that's one thing. And what was the last? And, and also, what's the impact to the declaration of tree mortality and hitch in the sense that they both speak to drought being part of the reason that it's an emergency? We want to make sure that if this goes away, it doesn't completely cancel out other declared emergencies, since there's no longer that support. So I think those are the questions that I would like to seek answers to. I don't know if there's anything else from board members that would like to add to that.
Well, you mentioned grants and funding opportunities, but we also need to have reimbursements in there, too.
True. From our auditor controller's perspective, are we still anticipating? Are we still collecting hours and so on and so forth? So thank you for that. And
Maybe anyone we're partnering with?
And, and I don't know that, that might need our help with some of that, to make sure we reach out to nonprofits or other groups that are doing that type of work.
Well, they'll probably know and just come, or however.
Yeah. Now, we, we definitely want to make sure that it's not just us financially that we would be impacting. It could be others. Potentially, it's, I'm thinking of groups like TARA or things like that, that some of the work that they do environmentally around the lake and things like that. So definitely a, a good addition.
So our climate officer could help us with that.
Okay.
And tribal liaison, too. We don't know if any of the tribal nations have any grants out there, too.
Is there consensus from the team to request answers to those questions?
Yeah, I think those are all good. I do know there were some inflow projects, too, that were worked on as far as water. There's a lot of folks that had to extend the, you know, those types of things. I know maybe special districts has any updates that we had here at the county that we were working on during that, you know, so that would be the only thing, but support everything else.
And I'll check with my local water districts, because they had similar drought grants as well to extend their pipeline in the lake.
And you mentioned it earlier, but it's worth mentioning again, anything related to the Pillsbury project.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
It looks like we have consensus for that. And please reach out to us if there's anything that we can do to help get some of these answers. We do, we are connected with some of these nonprofits and other groups as well. Internally, I think we can handle that, but overall, if there's any help, please reach out to a supervisor and see if we can provide some answers.
And timed item when it comes back.
So we will, because of the amount of folks that are interested in it, I think it would probably behoove us to make it a timed item when it comes back in April. So we'll make that happen. Looks like we have consensus for that, but we still have a emergency declaration continuation on the floor.
I move that we approve the continuation of proclamation of emergency declaration for drought conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move on to our 9:45 a.m. item, consideration of an update of Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority's Inclusion and Biomass Aggregation Pilot Project. And I want to check in with my colleagues, Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Pyska, if you want to introduce this item.
Yeah, so obviously with, with the Risk Reduction Authority and the growth, we've been making strides to move forward, specifically requests that I know from you, Supervisor Shabatia, of, you know, how we're gonna turn the Risk Reduction Authority into, you know, just a continual program that really helps move the process forward. We think this biomass aggregation pilot project is one of those steps to become sustainable for the Risk Reduction Authority. And that's what I have. And Terry's gonna present today our Climate Resiliency Officer, which is a part of the success of grant opportunities, others that admin has worked with the Risk Reduction Authority in supporting, to bring to, to bear. So that's what I have today. So I'll let Jessica go.
And I'll just add, it's been a while since we have given a board update from the Risk Reduction Authority. We've had a lot of, of changes going on, and even though this is from our, our climate officer, I just, I hope that we can all just receive this as an update of what's happening, what's been happening with the RRA, because this is something that we've been working on, Terry and I, for years together, but just recently, in the last several months, with the Risk Reduction Authority.
Yeah, thank you. As Supervisor Pyska and Simon had mentioned, we have been talking about being admitted into the biomass aggregation pilot project for years. This is the third year of the pilot project. There were several years leading up to it, getting ready for it, and Lake County as, was left out. And Lake County, at that time, when it began, was the only county that had a JPA that was focused on wildfire prevention. And so it's been a long-term goal of the RRA to position themselves and the county as a whole to be accepted into this pilot project, which is of the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, or OPR. The draft contract between OPR and the RRA is nearly, well, the draft is nearly completed. The consultant selection is ongoing, which I'll finalize by the 14th of this month. OPR increased the initial budget from $100,000 to $150,000, and then I heard just a couple of days ago, there, we have now $175,000, which is not a lot of money for hiring consultants to do this intensive work for a year. So there's some changes to the scope, which I'll go over. But it's anticipated that, once we get through this year, the RRA is reformulated, which just means the foundation documents are updated, the bylaws are updated, and they choose which direction they want to go. We will be eligible, or they will be eligible, for $1 or $2 million in seed money. All right. And so, again, two of OPR, the Office of Planning and Research, goals are to manage forests to achieve the state's economic and environmental goals, and to create a sustainable wood products market in California. So they develop the pilot projects to test new mechanisms for developing long-term feedstock contracts, which, over the years, in the work that I was doing previously and now, the contracting part is always the sticky wicket, so to speak, because it's biomass. It may, you may have a contract for it, but your forest burns, or is impacted by beetles. And this is something that is not unique to Lake County. It's throughout California and certainly in the North State. And so having a contracting entity that is a JPA or Joint Powers Authority, which is a government entity, eases market jitteriness. And so the nice part for Lake County is that information and templates from the pilot projects that have been ongoing have been shared with us and will be shared broadly throughout the state to provide a menu of options for broader adoption. For the RRA, they have, like we said, we have the benefit of selecting from state contractors with the experience to assist, because they've already been working on these other pilot And again, I know it's kind of small and hard to see, but this was a graphic that I showed your board last year that does not include Lake County. As you can see, all of those pilot projects are in the North State. The tiniest one is Marin. It's just a single county. And then we will be the other single-county pilot project. And so CALFRAME is the other name for these pilot projects, which is the California Forest Residual Aggregation for Market Enhancement. You know how government loves acronyms, so we have CALFRAME. It's the model developed by OPR to answer the question of if a JPA can improve forest biomass feedstock supply chains by providing a feedstock supply agreement that includes a publicly managed price mechanism for contract risk protection. For years, biomass utilization facilities, primarily large bioenergy facilities in the multiple megawatt scale, I mean, really large facilities, closed throughout the state of California due to several factors, but primarily the cost and length of time to get inter-tie agreements with IOUs or investor-owned utilities, and then haul and transportation And so the CALFRAME JPA models, again, Joint Powers Authority models, are these three. And these models are different ways that a JPA can be founded. And so the first one that I'll talk about is the Public Infrastructure JPA, and it's the most comprehensive of the outcomes, I mean, excuse me, of the options. And this would establish a JPA that would own or manage the development of a wood utilization facility. The JPA would then enter into contracts with feedstock providers, for example, landowners or forest sector contractors, and this JPA would likely look to use public property belonging to one of its members, or could also involve leasing private lands to serve as a host site for the desired infrastructure. Most likely, this would be a public-private partnership that would involve participation from the private sector, but the JPA itself would be made up of government agencies only, and that's the nature of a JPA. As government agencies do not seek profit, but only need to ensure that projects meet costs, this pathway may allow for revenue sharing. And again, as a reminder, one of the main concerns and one of the goals of the Risk Reduction Authority is to make money for itself to sustain its operations. And then another formulation of a JPA is called a services JPA. And essentially, in this scenario, any and all services that members may want to provide, but avoiding any public infrastructure or land ownership, this, excuse me, this approach would involve the new JPA agency providing the contract management and would manage that price structure and contract. JPA staff, when they have them, could also provide a menu of other services, such as forest management planning, that could include environmental review under SEQA or NEPA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act and the National Environmental Protection Act, insurance resources for landowners and wood products entrepreneurs, green waste program management, or connections to commercial lending professionals. And then the last one is the wildfire prevention JPA, which most closely matches the foundation of our Risk Reduction Authority. This approach would also require that associated biomass waste that is created from these mitigation projects is utilized and not open burned or left to decay and exacerbate fire risk. A wildfire prevention JPA could facilitate the use of the new contract template using a developed price structure, or negotiate other agreements between local businesses. This is the model most closely resembling the RRA. And the Marin, the other single-county JPA, also has a wildfire prevention JPA, but like the RRA, the utilization of the materials is not built into their structure either. So this model would be a new model for both of the existing JPAs, should the RRA elect to move in that direction. Part of the state's economic goals include BDO zones, or Bioeconomy Development Opportunity Zones. And the RRA wants to pursue this. The county, I think, would support it as well, anything that's gonna bring more businesses to our county. But the RRA will not, at this point, receive enough funding from OPR to pursue this, so I'm going to add it to a grant application with your board's approval. You should hear about that next week. And then to receive this designation, we first need a JPA that can oversee biomass utilization and sales, so it makes sense that this BDO zone is pushed off a little bit. And so year-one goals for the RRA is to update the foundation documents and bylaws. There's a consultant for that that will work with our county council. Create summary and report of biomass feedstock availability in Lake County, and then create a sustainable financing model for the Risk Reduction Authority. And then year-two goals, which will be expanded, of course, is pursue the BDO zone, and then create and fund an executive director and other staffing positions. That's my last slide. So that's the update on that. As I mentioned, I am working and I have been interviewing and questioning consultants from the state. I heard again from OPR yesterday to, and with a new set of templates, and I'm working with Mr., I got advice from Mr. Carter, Stephen Carter, in our office. And so, again, even though I'm gonna be out of town for a week, I will be able to continue working on it and have it. The intent is to have the finalized draft back to OPR no later than the 21st, so that the contract can be executed. Well, they said April 1st, but I think it'll more than likely be May 1st. And that's what we're working on. And I'm, to finally have the RRA in a position to fund itself, I think is very, very exciting. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Any comments or questions?
Well, unfortunately, the Farm Bureau folks left, because it's, this isn't just Forest Health Project, but this is going to impact all of our, our biomass throughout the county, because it's carbon sequestration and it's eliminating greenhouse gases. And so when we have conversions, orchard or vineyard conversions, there's lots of biomass that comes out of that, and potentially, you know, that could be a saleable product, rather than a burden when they have to burn the land and invest in all of that removal. So this is going to, to be much broader than, than just fire resiliency.
Correct.
Yeah. And if you remember, just before the end of the year last year, we took this to the board, the RRA board, we were able to pull it together, and there were quite a few conversations, especially from the City of Clear Lake representative Russ Kramer, you know, how are we gonna quantify? Instead of just getting rid of the materials, what are we doing? Are, are we gonna benefit for, as a community of building an economy? And this is really that step towards that. You know, so I really appreciate the Governor's Office reaching out and working with Jessica and Terry to really include Lake County in that. So I think we're on the right path, and getting the $175,000 to allow us to take those next steps is gonna be really important.
Okay.
I have a question for you. The feedstock broker situation, does that, chicken or egg is what I'm, I'm asking? Does the biomass facility come first, or does the feed broker come first in order to be prepared to, to market the output of the biomass facilities?
That's a great, ah, excuse me, a great question. I think it's both and, because you don't have, I mean, my preference is always, just my personal preference is to utilize your resources locally instead of exporting them. But if there's an opportunity to export them, you know, if there's a broker who could sell the biomass to Woodland or, or to another facility, until we're up to, I would say, you know, have businesses here that can utilize it, that would be a win-win, too. The, the most important thing is to get the waste woody biomass off the forest floor, out of our county road right-of-ways, out from under the power lines, and utilize it. Don't just compost, I mean, compost is great, don't get me wrong, but that also releases greenhouse gas.
A lot of compost.
Be a lot of compost, indeed. Too much.
Well, I think both things are going to be happening in parallel tracks, because this investment is setting up the JPA to be the broker, and the BDO zone is setting up the county to attract the industry and develop the local industry. So you, we, that's why we've been so insistent that we do both. Even though we don't have funding for the BDO zone, we're gonna look for another way to fund it, because one without the other will leave us completely stalled out.
Right.
So we have to have both.
Yep. And, and so it would, it would provide the raw resource as a feedstock, as well as potential output from a biomass facility?
Well, biomass, like an energy facility, is only one of the options. So the BDO zone So the BDO zone is going to look at bioenergy, biofuel, biochar, wood products, pellets, like, all of the things. They're going to look at the infrastructure that we have here, any current industry that we have here, ways to transport, and then figure out of all of those industries, or combination of industries, what will fit best here. And then invite the investment to come in.
Exactly. Mm-hmm.
Any further comments or questions, Vice Chair?
Let me find it real quick. Bam, there it is. So just looking into the Golden State Finance, or Golden State National Resources, the project that they're doing for the Forest Resiliency Project is based in Lassen, Port of Stockton, Topeka County. And this may be an opportunity to discuss with them and part of the project, because that's what they'll be doing, is using some of that biomass as well. But just maybe it'll fit in somewhere as well, and we're part of that, so.
They're in one of the pilots.
Oh, good.
The pilot map up there.
Oh, that's right, in the map. Okay, got it. Well.
Yeah.
Erase what I said.
We'll be talking to them.
No, it's, it's, it's all collaboration. And so all, so the different pilots have different priorities. And that pilot program, they're focused on products.
Right.
And the pilot program that's running in El Dorado, was it El Dorado, Sierra Nevada? I forget what, it's three counties there, I think. Anyway, they're, they're really focused on insurance.
Right.
And how the reduction of all of these fuels will help insurance. And so everybody has a different focus, but we're all using the same consultants and sharing information and collaborating so that all the pilots will be stronger.
Right.
And the ultimate goal is to ensure that the mass is gone, and it's not, it's not leaving us vulnerable to further wildfire.
It's just, it's not just gone, but it's, it's, it's going from burden to opportunity.
Right.
Correct. Value-adding it, so to speak, using an agriculture term.
So let's open it up for public comments. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Please.
I've been up complaining about fracturing the trees, cutting them down, throwing them away. And today I have a positive comment to make. We would be much more likely to succeed if, in the grant, you included the replanting. There is a Methodist church Girl Scout troop who took all the seeds from a fallen oak giant near their church, grew them, and replanted them on Cobb and other places. The tree had died during a storm, and the seeds were there. And this Girl Scout leader, she doesn't want to be mentioned by name, had the girls collect the seeds, plant them, and then when they were so high, she went up with the Girl Scouts and replanted them. So for every tree that dies, I would like it written into the grant that there were, there will be energy put forth to replanting new trees. And it would have a much more likely it would succeed. So we would have, we used to have oxygen in Clear Lake. I didn't realize that biomass was trees. The technical language in the grant is hard to understand for a common person like me who is marginal. But now that I know what it is, for every tree that goes, people, girls, boys, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, she'd be there to replant new babies. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
If you could put that in the grant, it would be very people-positive. Excuse me for talking, I, I'm not used to public talking, believe it or not. Bye.
Thank you, Joan.
Thanks, Joan. That's a great idea. And I just want to make a clarification for you. Biomass is any biological entity that has mass. Waste woody biomass is typically everything you put in your green waste bin. So it's not just trees. It can be more than that. It just depends on the terminology. But biomass, sometimes you hear about it in the Midwest where they're growing corn for ethanol. And that's considered biomass, because it's a biologic, it's a mass of biological entities. And so for Lake County and in California, primarily the term is about waste woody biomass. Thank you.
Says algae, too.
Thank you for the clarification.
Algae, algae is biomass.
Yeah, it is. It was mentioned that algae is also a type of biomass. This is informational-only. It does say consider direction to staff. I don't know that there's a direction other than what direction the RRA is taking. I will express that this is a lofty goal. I appreciate thinking big rather than thinking small. We have a big problem, therefore, we're going to need a big solution to be able to handle But I don't think there's any other direction. Yeah, we'll leave it at that. Nothing further?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. We're going to skip to item 7.3. We have Director Arten in and back, and want to make sure to use this time wisely. Consideration of Amending the Emergency Medical Care Committee Bylaws. This was brought by Supervisor Green and myself. Supervisor Green, would you like to introduce the item?
Thank you. This is basically a simple bylaws rewrite for our Emergency Medical Care Committee. It's, it's an important committee. It's also a complicated committee, because it brings together a lot of our fire agencies and EMS to talk about important things, including ambulance service. But over the past year now, we've been kind of at a standstill, because it's by far one of our largest advisory committees, and we were not able to get enough people appointed in the right designated seats to get quorum. And a long history to that. But long story short, the simplest path forward for us to kind of do a hard reboot for EMCC, allow them to get back to work on important things, such as this draft ambulance ordinance, now is a good time to do so, because we have a public health officer in place now, we have a health services director in place, who can help guide the county's input and participation in that committee. But we just don't have enough horses to fill out the existing bylaws adequately to get quorum, to do the bylaw change. So we're just bringing the bylaw change to the board directly, so that we can get EMCC up and running again, and they can take a look at the things they need to, including any potential future revisions of the bylaws that may be needed, which can take place in the future under the guidance of health services. So we have basically a plan here that would take advantage of our frequent flyers on EMCC and would eliminate certain committee seats. My wording in the staff memo probably wasn't ideal. Some of these participants have been very regular, so we don't mean any disservice to those who have been participating as voting members of the prior EMCC. But it's really hard to vote on things if you can't get quorum. So I hope those that are kind of on the list to be eliminated from this bylaws revision will not take any, any offense at that. And that, I think, is all I have on that, unless you have something to add, Chair.
There is something I wanted to add, and I need to ask County Council, this is something that I just thought of just prior to taking up this item. Since we had, since we're eliminating certain names from the list of membership, do we need to read out who will remain as members? They've already submitted their applications a while back, we've already approved them. But here it just says approving the change to the bylaws, but it doesn't change the membership appointment. And wondering if we can add that to our motion today, to make sure that we are clarifying who remains in the seats?
That could be incorporated, since it follows from the changes made to the bylaws as it relates to the appointment. So it's essentially a further elaboration.
Okay.
Of the recommended action.
So what I'll do is I'll read out the list that is proposed for continued membership, and that would be Timothy Stevens and Dr. Evan Bloom for hospital representation, Dr. Noemi Duen, public health officer, Anthony Arten, health services director, Chief Willie Sapeda and Jim Doughty for fire districts, Jason Chand and Ashley Giangrosso for private ambulance, and Michael Green as the appointed board supervisor. I'm the alternate, but that's a separate list. And so that is the proposed membership list at this moment. They have worked before on renewing their bylaws, unfortunately have not been able to vote on their new bylaws. So we should probably anticipate within the next three to six months to see some new bylaws coming from the EMCC. We didn't want to change anything other than just helping with the membership. One of the other changes that we're doing is it required two-thirds of the membership to show up for a quorum. We changed it to 50% plus one, as is typical for most committees, to basically give them every tool in their toolkit to be able to meet quorum and be able to conduct business at the EMCC level. That's all that I have, unless there's something additional. I want to check in with Director Arten. It looks like he doesn't have any further comments as well. And if there's no questions or comments from board members, I'll open it up for the public. I see no comments on Zoom and no one getting up to the mic in the chamber, and bringing it back to the board for action with the list proposed for membership.
I'll move to a move, move to approve the proposed changes to the Emergency Medical Care Committee bylaws with the seats designated as stated by the chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And let's go to our 7.2, consideration, oh, no, you wanted to take that at a later time, I apologize. 7.4, CAO Parker, is staff ready for 7.4, or should I take up 7.5?
Well, I think you have to take up 7.4, sir, because actually, as you can see, Elisa had to go to an appointment, but she'll be back.
Okay.
So I'm more than happy and more than ready to present this item.
So let's go ahead and do 7.4. Consideration of Priorities for Fiscal Year 2025 Community Project Funding. And B, Discussion and Direction to Staff on Which Priorities to Further Pursue for Potential Submittal to Congressman Thompson. CAO Parker.
Thank you, Chair. On Wednesday, February 14th, the county received a letter from Congressman Mike Thompson inviting community project funding requests. His letter noted that final guidance from the Appropriations Committee had not yet been developed. Nonetheless, Congressman Thompson is asking that priorities be submitted by the end of the day, March 15, 2024. We, of course, would like to submit at the earliest convenience that we can, because it is a competitive process. Staff quickly reached out to the county department heads and staff, seeking input on projects that should be granted priority for the county's fiscal year 2025 submittals. As you may recall, members of Congress have previously been limited up to 15 community project funding requests. Since they have not yet enacted this program yet, we're just going to assume that they still, it's still 15. You may recall, the first year it was only five. Let's see. There is no guarantee that all requests submitted will be funded, and strong local support for projects is frequently pivotal on the Committee on Appropriations' competitive evaluation process. Now, departmental staff submitted seven potential projects for this board's consideration. Departments have been asked to be available via Zoom or in person, should your board have questions on their various projects. I do recommend submitting all projects to be further vetted by the congressional staff in DC prior to the 15th due date.
Thank you very much for that.
And I'm available for any questions. I hope I can answer them. Unfortunately, Matthew was unavailable to be present today.
So we have the list of the potential projects. Each project provided a summary of what that would entail, where we're at already with those projects, and so on. And so want to open up for comments or questions from board members. I think it is unfortunate that Congress is a little bit behind. This is not specific to Congressman Mike Thompson. But without knowing the details of what is on the list of projects that are most likely to be approved, I think it would definitely behoove us to push forward with the full list that is right here, rather than eliminating some from the list, only to find out then what we've pushed forward is not eligible. That does put a little bit of mystery as to what will happen in the long run, and I'm hoping that we eventually get a concluding presentation of what has occurred with our Washington congressional office folks. But I caution eliminating projects from the list, just in case that those are the projects that would be the only ones eligible. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a question. I don't know if it's for staff or Supervisor Crandall. I just, Project 2 was new to me, so I was just hoping to get a little background on that, if that was a water resources request or something else.
Yeah. Let me go to the document. But from what I understand, it is from the Lake County Watershed Protection District. It also lists in the letter the different partners and who's working in this project area, not only with the hitch, but also it's, it's, it looks like there's going to be some work in the streams for some of the vegetation and whatnot. And I know that this is going to work twofold, not only with the hitch, but also with the situation with the flooding. And so I was really glad to see them turn this around and bring this forward to us, because that's been one of the biggest gripes in Upper Lake, is a lot of the flooding as well. And that's one of the main statements I've made every time we talk about the hitch proclamations and all of the situations with the state, is it's not just about the water conditions or the drought, it's also the stream beds. It's the stream removing vegetation, removing sediment, and all of those things. And so I'm glad to see that they turned this around and brought it forward, so.
Was this a Blue Ribbon project originally?
No, well, I think it might. No, it doesn't look like it has that in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know it's been discussed multiple times in the Middle Creek Committee. It's been brought to our attention, since there's some connectivity to the Middle Creek area. But definitely an important project in trying to relieve some of the stress and pressures that occurs when there's too much precipitation in that area.
Right, right. And if you remember, about a month or so back, there was a situation where it flooded in Upper Lake. And so this is going to help with some of that as well. So it's, it's, it's like just a synergistic way to deal with some of that. And so I just appreciate seeing it on there, and I thank you again, Department of Water Resources in Lake County, to put this forward.
Any other comments or questions?
Just in, in support of the list, obviously, as we sat here, at least in my time on the board, a lot of these projects, we've already talked about. The Schoolhouse Museum in Lower Lake is one of the big projects for the retrofit, especially for the earthquake. You know, that's a unique building that we need to really work. If we don't get it this year, we need to continue pushing that and see what other agencies we may be able to go after. But all the projects on the list, as I look through them, are relevant to issues that are happening in each one of our districts, almost it seems like. And it really would be good to get it on the list now. May not be funded this year, but they're going to continue to be coming, so I'm in agreement with all of them. And I do like the, the last one there, number seven, I would say Developer Incentive Engagement Project Description, as we're helping with economic development, housing, bringing folks here to do the projects that are much needed in Lake County.
Yeah. Now, I, I don't have the full picture of exactly what that is, but I do know that acquiring land is going to be a much easier process than waiting for somebody to buy the land and to develop the land on their own. We have to be a partner in that process, and I see that there, we would be requesting approximately $1 million for that. And I think that is a, a great start to making sure that we can make those things happen. We did receive two emails from Lower Lake Community Action Group. And the Lower Lake Historic School Preservation Committee, supporting the Schoolhouse Museum over in Lower Lake. And just wanted to make sure and mention that. Vice Chair Crandall?
Yeah, just one last thing. The number seven, the Spring Valley Lake Reservoir Recovery Project, it's been going on since like the 2008, '10s timeframe. And so I think that, I know that tomorrow there's a CSA meeting. I know they'll be pretty excited to see us, you know, put out there as well, because it's, it's just been an ongoing deal. They've got far on some of it, but then there's been a couple hiccups. So just seeing more attention to it is important, so.
And seeing the details of how it's shrunk over the years shares how important it is to try and get it back. to try and get it back to its normal condition. So I appreciated the summaries, because I got to learn a little bit more about some of those issues as well. If there's no further comments, I'm going to open it up for public comment on this item. I see no hands in Zoom and no one reaching for the microphone. And so at this point, we're looking for approval of staff direction, or I apologize, I haven't looked at the recommended action on the...I'm sure we can make a motion to move forward with the list as suggested, just to make it more official than just direction to staff.
Please. Rook Mendez presented to the board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. And again, just checking for consensus to come back once we do have a finalized list after the conversation with congressional offices, to come back and present to the board and to the public as to what exactly has been submitted for request. And don't have a date at this point. That'll be whenever things are done. Looks like there's consensus for that.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. We will move on to item 7.6, consideration of Rule 235, unrepresented grievance procedure. CAO Parker, do I pass it over to Ms. Samick?
Please, sir.
Welcome.
Good morning, Pam Samick, Director of Human Resources. Today, we'd like to present to you a grievance procedure for our unrepresented and extra help employees. We didn't have a procedure previously, and staff recommends that we add it, so all employees have access to the grievance procedure. Questions?
Are there any questions to this? I know it mimics the same basic procedure that other union represented groups have. I, I will put in my, my comment that there is a weird overlap, in my opinion, based on the fact that it's the same department where our Director of Human Resources is step two and our CAO is step three, but yet the same department. And my personal opinion would be to split that up. I know in the past, I believe it was, I don't think it went to the CAO, I think it went to the Board of Supervisors, or maybe it went to the CAO and then to the Board of Supervisors. I'm not sure which, what, what it looked like before, but I know it changed at one point.
No, it depends on the union, and I mimicked LCEA on this, and that's the way their group, and there's three other units that has the same steps. Some of them go to you, some of them stop at the CAO.
Okay. And I'm, I'm for that wall of separation, where it feels like it's the same group that's kind of doing the same type of oversight. So that's what I would suggest, is that we replace the CAO for part step three and be the board. And from what I understand, there are not many appeals. It's not like we would be busy every Tuesday dealing with these types of situations.
No, because this also defines what a grievance is, and that often gets misunderstood as, I don't like this person, or they're mean to me, or something that really isn't a grievance. So, and I've included a new form, which outlines the timelines, so that the employee understands what the timelines, the department head understands the timeline as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions?
So are you, are you saying that you would rather see from one, rather than CAO, it comes straight to the board?
Yeah.
And I'm just thinking, just in general, is there possibly, is there another group that's put together like a oversight group that could be right before that, or you would rather see?
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, step one is the department head, step two is the...
Informal is the supervisor, then the department head, then HR, then the CAO.
And then, and you're saying, okay. And so what I'm thinking is, is like a collaborative group that is either comprised of an ad hoc or something? I mean, is that, is that too, is that too much? Or, I mean, would you rather just, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there.
No, I appreciate options and ideas. CAO Parker?
Yes, I would hesitate using an ad hoc in a possible grievance process. The less the best, the, those that are actually trained to review and recommend, I would, I would limit it to that.
And I don't, I use the wrong word, like ad hoc. I just mean like maybe like another committee that's comprised of maybe yourself and maybe like another, like, I'm just using county council, I'm saying that's what it is. I'm just trying to stimulate discussion about this. Like another, like, I'm trying to think of a group, a group name that would be really good, like...
Kind of like the Builders Appeal Board, where it's filled with those that are professionals in, in that space?
Right. I'm just, yeah.
I think then you have to get a quorum, and then, rather than understand what happened, what the grievance is, and, and hopefully it, it stops before it gets to final level if the employee understands how that person is making the ruling. But I think it would, it would expand the process and make it much more difficult, and...
I'm okay with it being the CAO. I think that's why we have a CAO, and I don't think that it needs to come to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the way it's presented at this point. What we're doing is giving an opportunity that wasn't there before in this, you know, if, if there are issues down the road, I think our HR would do a good job of at least bringing those issues up to us. So I think creating something at this point is the way to go as presented. So stopping at the CAO at this point.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, and I agree. Let's go with it as presented, if only because even if we were to entertain the idea of an appeals panel, we would have to bring it back at a later date, because we would have to do not just unrepresented, but represented, and theoretically, we may have to dive into closed session, because we're changing things up. So I like the way this is presented today. It's simple. It follows, it mirrors basically the represented grievance procedures. So let's get it through, and then if we want to continue the dialogue about an appeals panel, we can do that on a different day, but bring back all the policies that would be affected.
That's the word I was looking for, panel. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. If there's nothing further, let's open it up for public input. I see no hands up in Zoom, and we seem to have almost vacated the chamber, so bringing it back for action.
Move to approve Rule 235, unrepresented grievance procedure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we are going to take up item 7.5 from Behavioral Health. Whoops, just lost it. 7.5, consideration of amendment number three to the agreement between County of Lake and Willow Glen Care Center for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services, with no change to the contract maximum for fiscal years 2223, 2324, and 2425, and authorize the board chair to sign. Director Jones, welcome back.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So this is just coming before your board, because this contract does have a large dollar amount. And just an explanation, so while it's not anticipated that the rate changes, which are the subject of this amendment, will affect the dollar amount, I just did want to bring it to the board's attention. It felt appropriate.
Well, thank you very much for that. Any comments or questions? And, and I do know that in the rates, it does offer a lot of other rates for other facilities, but this is specific to the Willow Glen Care Center, correct?
They're all Willow Glen.
Oh, they're all Willow Glen? Okay. It looked like it identified a specific facility as Willow Glen.
We'll take any bed that we can get anywhere.
We, it's definitely hard pressed to find some, so let's make sure we're open. Appreciate that response. Any further comments or questions? Supervisor Green? Okay. Let's open it up for public input. I see no hands on Zoom, and nobody left in the chambers. Bringing it back for action.
Chair, I move to approve amendment number three to the agreement between County of Lake and Willow Glen Care Center for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services, with no change to the contract maximum for fiscal years 2022, 23, 24, and 2425, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. So I think the remaining outside of our calendars will be taken up in the afternoon. What I'm wondering is if we can go into maybe closed session and then take a lunch after that and come back at 1:00?
Yes. Do you, is even 7.2 going to be this afternoon?
Yes.
Okay.
It's been requested to postpone that until then.
Okay.
So we will go ahead into closed session. Public employee evaluation, title Behavioral Health Director, 8.2, public employee evaluation, title county council, 8.3, conference with labor negotiator, county negotiators, Susan Parker and Pam Samick, and B, employee organizations, LCDDAA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSSEA, and LCSMA. And with that, we'll go into closed session, and we'll be back for open session at 1:00 PM. Welcome back to our meeting. It is 1:01 PM. We are going to take up item 6.6, consideration of presentation from California Department of Fish and Wildlife, providing an overview of Clear Lake Hitch Summit meeting, explanation of the relative population estimate and related hitch topics. And today from Water Resources, we have Jordan Beaton, and please introduce the item and your guest.
Good afternoon, board. I'm Jordan Beaton, Water Resources Program Coordinator. Today we have Felipe La Luz from CDFW, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, for a presentation for you on Clear Lake Hitch.
Welcome, Mr. La Luz.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, and I really appreciate the board having me come back. It's my pleasure to be here. So as Jordan said, my name is Felipe La Luz. I'm a senior environmental scientist with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and I facilitate the Clear Lake Hitch Task Force. And in that role, I really serve in coordination and communications, both with the department and with our partner agencies and other entities. Just to give you an overview, I'm going to talk about the task force and our role, as well as provide an update on our most recent summit. I'm going to talk about our draft population target and relative population index, which are described in the draft conservation strategy, and I'll explain why I keep using draft when we get to that topic. I'm also going to talk a little bit about hitch habitat and provide some information on how the public can stay informed and how the public can help. I also want to say that this is, you know, I had some questions, some questions were fed to me, both from the board through various channels, so I'm trying to encompass everything I've heard. Keep these questions coming. I'm happy to come back and provide more information. So the task force, as many of you know, originated from a government-to-government consultation between various sovereign tribal governments and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. That occurred in August of 2022. We have held two summits, one in 2022 and one in 2023, and we are planning a third for 2024. And the role of the task force is to coordinate projects, share data, and improve, improve communication. I know scientists are notoriously bad communicators, so we're trying to work on that. And this has really been an excellent exercise for the state to really get out of our silos and come out into the county and get our boots on the ground and really have a face. These are just some of our collaborators, of course, some of the tribal sovereign governments, as well as agencies from the federal, state, and local level, just some of the projects that we are either starting or helping to facilitate. Of course, US Army Corps of Engineers with the Middle Creek Project, we are tracking that very closely. Some of you may have seen the California Conservation Corps out here clearing brush and doing some stream bed maintenance, some research by USGS. I could fill the whole afternoon listing all the projects, but I'll try and keep it focused. So really, one of the big questions was what happened in the 2023 summit. It was an all-day meeting, followed by some site visits on the second day. The big commitments were staff funding, staff and funding, so part of that commitment is me. Y'all have me for another year at least. And again, I'm happy to come out for these meetings. And as well as providing some funding, the department has committed $2 million in barrier removal funds, as well as to match our prior, our prior funding for, to support tribal science. We talked a lot about co-management during that summit, and not only in keeping all the agencies and the tribal governments involved in decision-making, but also upholding our duties as, within our own jurisdiction, so enforcement, research, and that sort of thing. We've talked about the need for restoration a lot, and identified some projects that are ongoing. I know the county just received funding from the Water, Wildlife Conservation Board for a big project, and we're looking forward to working with them, with, with you all on getting that going forward. And we also talked a lot about the conservation strategy, and this draft conservation strategy has been in the works for, I believe, over six years now. And we do want to, are making a big push to get it over the finish line, get it signed and implemented. Some aspects of it have already been implemented in the research that we're doing, but we really want to put a pin in it, get it done, and use it as a guiding document moving forward. Of course, there are areas to improve, data being a big one, and many of you are all aware of the State Water Resources Control Board Information Order and Emergency Regulation to look into the surface groundwater interaction. You know, hitch need water, fish need water, and so we're looking at how these resource management affects their biology and their habitat. We also discussed the need for more biological data. I know in 2023, it was a big surprise to a lot of us, a big relief, that we saw a big increase in the number of hitch observed, and we identified some gaps in our monitoring that may help us better understand how the hitch behave and inform conservation actions. We can also improve on enforcing existing regulations. The, the Department of Fish and Wildlife has committed increased warden activity in the area, and we are also working on bringing some other projects into compliance, you know, older projects that have been grandfathered in. We're working to ensure that they comply with existing regulations. And we also want to resolve some habitat and life cycle uncertainties that arose because of 2023. And of course, the big, one of the big barriers that we're working on is Kelsey Creek at Main Street Bridge. I stopped by there on my drive out here to see what it looks like under higher flow conditions, and this is one of the major barriers that we are working on removing. I'm going to shift gears now to the relative population estimate. This next slide is kind of scary, but I'll step you through it, and this breaks all of our best practices on slides, but I felt this was the best way to convey this information. So it's a lot of words and some math, so please understand the presentation will be available on the website, so please take a look at this slide for those of you that want to and dig into it deeper. But the relative population estimate is exactly that, is it's an estimate. It's not an absolute abundance. It's not a measure that says this is exactly how many fish are in the lake. What its strength is, is we use consistent methods to measure them, and we could use that to observe trends over time. It uses a mark recapture method, so we collect a group of fish, mark them. In this case, we punch a hole in their fin, so it'll heal by next year, but it'll, that mark will stay during the survey. We release those fish and then recapture them, and then based on the ratio of marked fish in the recapture, we can estimate how many people, how many fish are in the population. We use two methods, the Schnabel method and the Schumacher-Eshmeyer method. I put the equations here. You can recreate this. If you go through and take, say, a jar of marbles, 100 marbles, grab a handful, mark them, release them back into the jar and shake it, and repeat that, and you could plug those numbers into this equation and get an idea of how these different methods behave. They have their strengths and weaknesses. I haven't modeled this. We can do this in a computer and model it, but it would be a good student project, actually, to compare these two methods. And we calculate it two different ways because of, we want multiple methods to support. You know, we can't rely on a single one and one point in time. If we use multiple methods comparing them all, it adds strict to our decision-making. Just so, if you look at the little underscores, so it'll be T equals 1, T equals 2, those are the sampling events. In 2020, when the survey first started, it was based on four, four sampling events, and that was due to COVID. Our district biologists ideally would be able to complete 10 sampling events, but between 2021 and 2023, the estimates calculated were based on between eight and 10 sampling events, again, with four in 2020 due to COVID restrictions. And these are the results. So as you can see by that graph in the middle, 2023, we did see a large increase in fish catch. An important thing to... An important thing to note here, one important caveat, you know, of course, the devil is in the details, is these are adult and juvenile fish. So these are not larvae that were born in 2023 because of the good conditions. So it wasn't a population response to wet conditions. It was a population response to habitat connectivity. So these fish were somewhere on the landscape and were able to enter the areas that we sample. So Holiday Harbor, Canacta Casino Harbor, Clear Lake State Park, and Soda Bay. Those are the four areas that we sample to build this estimate. And so there are several hypotheses, but I'll get into a little bit. But I wanted to talk about the numbers. When this report was put out, people latched on to the 1.3 million. And that was the highest number in the report, and people were latching on to it and saying like, well, there's 1.3 million fish. The population's not in any trouble. So that was based on the SEM, the Schumacher, yeah, sorry. So that was based on one of the methods. One thing to note is these have very large confidence intervals or error bars. So we're fairly confident that it's within this range. Most likely, it is close to that number. But the confidence interval for the, for the SM ranged from 73, about 74,000, to about 7.7 million. That's a pretty wide range. So that's one of the weaknesses in that, is that if we don't get a lot of fish captured, we have these large error bars. For the SEM, the upper bound was incalculable. We were not able to cap, to calculate it because only one fish was recaptured, and the math to calculate that relies on more than what we capture. So we marked 1,000 fish, one was recaptured, and we got these numbers. And it's not to say that these aren't informative, but picking one point is not informative. You know, focusing on that 1.3 million is not going to tell us anything. It's all relative. And so over years, as we collect more data, calculate this repeatedly, we'll get an idea of the trends in the population and how they respond to conditions. So that, to kind of bolster the weakness in that and shore it up, we've developed a draft population target. This is described in the draft conservation strategy, and it's based on three CDFW surveys. So the visual survey, which our district biologist actually goes up to various stream crossings and counts the fish, the relative population estimate, which I just discussed, and the general fish survey, in which he goes around the lake and electrofishes and assesses all fish that are collected. For the draft population target to be met, these three criteria have to be met for six consecutive years. I have to note that this does not trigger anything. This does not trigger delisting or anything like that. This is just the initial goal that we're setting that we want to work towards. And we call it a draft population target because there's no consensus yet. We're still working on building scientific consensus to support it. So some of the criticisms we've heard is that it's a limited area. It only focuses in the upper arm. There's some concern that it does not allow for cultural take. So we are going to be working with the tribal governments and with the other research entities to refine this over the next five years and keep it incorporated as it is right now in the draft conservation strategy, with the acknowledgement that it needs to be improved and reassessed. And that's how science works. You know, we continually test. But as we can see here, the relative population estimate and general fish survey check the box. So the Clear Lake Hitch was the second most abundant fish in the general first fish survey. Both of the population estimates were greater than the 75,000 fish estimate, and the visual survey did not check the box. So 2023, we did see more fish. We did collect more fish, but this would not have counted as one of the six years in the population target. And just in short to say that one year doesn't fix the emergency. You know, we are still concerned about the fish's persistence. And so that's really what I want to drive home here, is that 2023, while we did observe more fish, it does not get us out of the woods. It really will take six consecutive years of good, you know, of good population growth. Changing gears again, I'm switching to habitat. So this is to address some questions I had about why the information order relating to groundwater is important. And the answer is simply hitch use the entire watershed. So this is a figure from Matthew Young at the USGS. He published this paper in 2021 and basically looked at what food the fish were eating and showed that young juvenile fish are nearshore, adult fish are out in the middle of the lake, and that we all know that hitch spawn in the tributaries. This is that, that life history that we're more familiar with. So the information order is to look at the tributary specifically. So there are still other aspects of hitch biology that we are trying to address. 2023 taught us that they likely occupy isolated bodies of water. Our district biologist did detect some juvenile Clear Lake Hitch up in Tulley Lake. And the hypothesis proposed by Fred Fire of the USGS is that this big population boom, apparent population boom that we saw in 2023, is the result of fish from outside of the lake entering the lake from small bodies of water. And so we have some tools that we're going to use to test this, both in collaboration with the tribes. USGS has an old list study where they'll look at the chemistry of fish bones to try and determine where these fish are coming from. And we're also going to increase monitoring in Tulley Lake to really see how much that can contribute to the population. The whole story is, it's likely that they are in small isolated bodies of water, and it's likely that our imperfect sampling method missed some within the lake also. Because keep in mind, we only sampled those four areas within the lake. And that's why we add the other two methods to our population target. And we're going to align USGS's sampling and the tribal sampling to really get a robust measure of how the population's doing. So it's many bits of information feeding into the question. And so how does water use affect hitch habitat? This figure on the far right is from Winter et al., and the title pretty much says it all. This is a USGS publication, that groundwater and surface water are a single resource. And I put the link there. It's a pretty hefty document. I'm not going to lie, but the introduction and kind of fundamental points of it describe how the water table affects streams. And so here we see the top portion of that figure on the right. This is a gaining stream where the water table can contribute water to the streams. The middle slide is a losing stream where the water table is still connected, but is drawing water out of the stream. And at the very bottom, a disconnected stream. And this is the question that the information order is, is asking, is how does groundwater, you know, this plot is really simple. This figure is really simple. Geology is a lot more complex than this. So the information order is really to get the information we need to determine how water use is affecting water in the streams. And we have many tributaries throughout that feed into the lake. Likely, they're all unique in their own way. So we really need more data to inform this decision. In addition to that, CDFW is conducting an in-stream flow study. This is the complement, the study the Big Valley EPA conducted. They released a two-dimensional hydrodynamic model that uses us, you know, uses computer simulations to identify areas where flow would become an issue for hitch passage and rearing. So it'll identify areas where, say, gravel bars exist or other barriers that we can either target for restoration or identify target flow that we need, certain flow requirements that we need to allow them to pass. There's plenty of more information on the website. And just the draft study plan for the CDFW in-stream flow study is online, and the public comment, the public input period for that actually ends on the 7th. And I'll have the website at the end of this presentation. And so just continuing on with that, the timing in which the streams dry leads to direct mortality in the form of stranding, this picture, many of you have seen before. This is Adobe Creek in March of 2014, a drought year. About a week before this picture, the flows were too high in the stream for our biologist to enter safely and sample fish. He used to use FIC nets. The flow was too high for him to safely deploy them. He came back a week later to find this. And you see, these are, these are fresh fish, and you could see the ground is still somewhat wet. So this is the result of a rapid decrease in flow in the streams, and we need better data to determine what really causes this. In addition to desiccation of adults, juveniles, and eggs, and larvae, it is also a passage issue. So fish can move up, you know, they'll dry up and they'll become stranded in isolated pools, and that requires the fish rescues that the department conducts and some of the tribal EPAs conduct. Like I said earlier, there are many other habitat considerations, both within the lake and within the tributaries. Tulley, willows, and other native plant restorations are important and are going to be a big part of our conservation strategy. This picture on the left is the Big Valley shoreline where they are conducting native tulley restoration, planting native tulleys, and they have to stake down the tulley so they don't float away before they get established. Robinson Rancheria is also conducting willow restoration. Willow's been important to maintain bank stability. So that not only helps prevent erosion and sediment, but prevents, provides habitat for fish as they, while they are in the streams. And then non-native species. So the most visual of our surveys is the carp management program. Carp not only prey on, they consume, sorry, I'll go back. So carp not only consume eggs, they directly prey on the eggs, but they also root in the sediment and stir up nutrients, which can lead to water quality issues. And they're a notorious invasive species throughout the country. And then, of course, barriers and fish passage. So in our 2014 status review, we estimated that 92% of spawning habitat is blocked by barriers. This is a barrier on Manning Creek. It doesn't look like much. It's a small road, you know, maybe two feet. It was a barrier. We installed this kind of dinky fish ladder, and it works. We've gotten reports of hitch actually successfully using this ladder and passing this barrier. We built this. This was at no cost to the landowner. We just needed permission to be there and the information that that barrier was there because, of course, it's on private land. We can't just go and do whatever we want. So the property owner reached out to us. We were able to work with them and our shop, our habitat conservation shop, and create this fish ladder. And we actually are currently working on one, have one in the plans for Seagull Creek to address another culvert that's a minor barrier, but still a barrier nonetheless. So how can the public help? Data. I've mentioned data many times, so we encourage you to share your data, either participating in the State Water Resources Controlled Monitoring Program. So folks have received that information order. Just please respond and work with them. The Big Valley EPA also has a well monitoring program where it's not monitoring water use, but they can install a sensor to monitor the height of the water level within your well at 15-minute increments. So if you're in the Big Valley watershed and are interested in helping and have a well near a stream, we can put you in touch with them. We also need to hear reports of where hitch are stranded. So this can be either reported to CDFW, and I'll have some contact information at the end, or to a tribal EPA. Robinson Rancheria has a memorandum of understanding with this, where they can actually do the rescues without us coming out, and it really makes for a more efficient process. Barriers, of course. Report barriers to us, both, you know, unknown. It seems that every time we go out to a private property, somebody points out either an abandoned mill or an old pump or something, a new barrier that we're not aware of. So we really want the public to be our eyes and report these barriers, both soft barriers like debris piles and more permanent barriers such as old roads or infrastructure. And even just problem areas, areas that you think, that you see like, well, there's frequent flooding, like the stream always spills over here, let us know, and we can investigate it. Report pollution, both locally and to the Cali PA. So we get reports of cars, automobiles. There was, last year, there was a truck full of fertilizer that went off the road near the lake. So those sort of pollution events, please let us know. And then, most importantly, do not disturb the hitch in the streams. Even if they are stranded, report that to us. They are a threatened species, so we can't, the citizens can't go and take them and move them themselves, but we request that you report those strandings to us and observe them, appreciate them, but please do not disturb them. To stay informed, I put three webpages up here. The State Water Resources Control Board has a dedicated Clear Lake Hitch webpage and email list. They have a lot of information about the information order there. The Fishing Game Commission has an email list where you'll get notifications. You'll get everything. So it'll be a lot of stuff that's not relevant to Lake County, but we do occasionally send out hitch information through there. And just a reminder, their meetings are hybrid. So you can watch their meetings online, submit public comment online. And the Blue Ribbon Committee for the Rehabilitation for Clear Lake also has an email list, and they do have public meetings. I participate in the technical subcommittee, which has a public component. And so I encourage you all, for those who are interested and have the bandwidth, to start attending these meetings, providing comment. We want information. And this is just a bunch of contact information. So for permitting questions, State Water Resources Control Board has their Clear Lake Hitch specific email address. Our in-stream flow study has a specific email address. Our cannabis program has a specific email address. I included our district biologist up here. He might be upset with me for that, but if you do see stranded fish or major issues, please contact him or me. We have a general fish questions email address, so I'm with the Native Fishes Group. You could email us about random fish questions. We'll come out and talk to classes. We love to hear from the public. And if you're unsure, contact me. You could reach out to me directly. My email's right there. I have a stack of business cards for people in the audience who want to get in touch with me. Basically, my role is to put people in contact with the right people and kind of herd the cats. And this is my last slide, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for making yourself so accessible to all of us so that we can email you your questions and learn more as we continue down this path. Want to make sure and check in with my colleagues if there are any questions or comments. Supervisor Green.
Thank you for the presentation, especially summing up the summit stuff, because not everyone gets to go to those. And I'm just going to throw out some questions. I'm not expecting immediate answers. I may circle back with you after this. But I appreciate what the water boards have done and all that. CDFW doesn't currently have a dedicated webpage or a place where they host all their assets regarding Clear Lake Hitch?
No, we do not.
Okay. Suggestion. To the extent people are going to be going out and witnessing these fish and actually hoping to do some level of community science or citizen science, the very nice math figures you had all had to do with population surveys in lake using your very rigorous scientific methods. So my question is, how do we get people invested in the idea that they can contribute through community science, not just letting you know when there are strandings? But is there much value in tributary observations of fish in the population modeling that you guys are doing? Because if there's a platform that we need to mature and make available to our community, if only to do environmental education, that's one thing. But if one of the data gaps is we're not even able to capture all the fishies that we see splashing up in the tribes, what's the use of that data? And what available data platform are you using currently to take advantage of community science?
Yeah, so we currently don't utilize a lot of community science. We do have the CHI Council's reports. For community science, the best, what we would be able to best use it for is for distribution. So especially for identifying places where hitch kind of congregate, because that usually means that there's a barrier. So if you're seeing big congregations of hitch, you know, next to a ditch or somewhere, that means that something's causing them to be there instead of spreading out throughout all the spawning habitat. Community science definitely has its strengths. One of the big drawbacks is standardization. So if we're just getting reports, you know, we can only use it for presence. We can't use it for absence because nobody's looking. So that's one. So that's one of the drawbacks of community science and it's really difficult to successfully make a robust community science program and we'd have to train, you know, a big cohort of people, have them using standardized methods, ensure that they can identify the fish properly because, you know, they, they look very similar to blackfish and, and to the layperson can look very similar to suckers or other fish in the streams, or roach. So community science would best be used for presence observations. To incorporate it into a big population model would require a lot of training and a lot of dedicated volunteers. I'm not saying it's not doable, but it would be a pretty big lift if there is a group that wants to undertake that. Reach out to me, like, I'm happy to work with you and we can develop a steady plan. I know UC Davis does have a community science center, we can engage them and, and see if we could develop something, but it would take a lot of planning and some very dedicated volunteers.
And it's good to know that because as happy as I was to go around last spring chasing fish around and counting them, it doesn't sound like that's useful too much for the population modeling. Last question, you mentioned take, so as it stands right now, what's the take on Clear Lake Hitch? None is allowed, cultural take is allowed, but non-cultural take is allowed, or do you know the current state of the take regulation as applies to Clear Lake Hitch?
So as, as a state listed species, they're threatened, you would need a scientific collecting permit or a memorandum of understanding with the department?
All right. And last question, I promise. You're really focused on the tributaries, population modeling, all those good stuff that you're talking about in the draft strategy. If there's one thing that's maybe hasn't gotten a lot of attention or is de-emphasized so far, in, in my opinion, is non-native fish and how they might impact in-lake populations. And the only reason I'm asking that is in our lake, our regulations are different than other lakes as far as when there are game fishing contests. In our lake, they go to congregated weigh-in stations and other lakes like Barryessa, they may do the, the capture of the weight and the length of the fish in the boat and then release it right there. And, and the most common weigh-in point is on the upper lake, which is also where our Clear Lake Hitches are most prominent. So is CDFW examining the impact of non-native fish or the potential impact of gaming fishing, game fishing regulations at all?
So there is a regulation specific to Clear Lake that requires a release of bass for these bass tournaments. I forget the actual distance, but it does require them to be released away from the, from the weigh-in site. I'd have to follow up and get you the exact regulation, but it is available online. As far as the impact of non-native species, Robinson Rancheria, of course, is heading up their carp management, carp and goldfish management program. Our district biologist has done some stomach analysis, looking at largemouth bass. It's really, we don't have enough data to make any solid conclusions and that is something that does need to be looked at. Predation, not only by largemouth bass, but also catfish are pretty voracious predators. Inland surfersides are notorious egg predators in the delta. And then a lot of the sunfish, green sunfish and bluegill tend to be egg predators also. In order to do an egg predation study would require testing for hitch DNA in their stomach contents. That's something that I don't think has been proposed yet, but it's something that we can look into. We chose to focus on tributaries because the data that was coming into us was suggesting that there was a pinch point around the early life stages, so between egg and transition to juvenile. And that tributaries being critical for that life stage is really where we started with. It's a yes and question. Yes, tributaries are important, yes, non-native species have an impact. We haven't looked at mercury yet or other, you know, contaminants, so we haven't gotten to it yet. But this sort of feedback is good and I do hear the predation question quite a bit and it's something that we'll have to continue looking at.
And then, last question, absolutely for sure, the inflow, in-stream flow models that you're hoping to create using the water board's data, what's the length of that process? I appreciate that you want to put a pin in the draft Clear Lake Hitch strategy sooner than later, but it sounds like the data collection that you're going to be partnering with the water boards on is going to take some time. So do you have a realistic estimate how long it's going to take to come up with a in-stream flow model and it's going to be tributary by tributary?
So it is going to be tributary by tributary. Big Valley Rancheria already has their model out, it's on their website. So they have a 2D hydrodynamic report specific to the Big Valley watershed. And so our, the CDFW study is going to complement that, not only looking at their water, at Adobe Creek in Kelsey, but also looking at other watersheds, at other tributaries throughout the watershed. So it's just building on their study, but the model exists. There's also the California Environmental Flows Framework, which is another sort of desktop analysis that we're going to use to complement our boots-on-the-ground study. So this will be three layers of information that'll help us identify restoration sites and, and problem areas. Sorry, I didn't, as far as the timeline for the State Water Resources Control Board, from what I understand, of course, I'm not with the water board, they, their information order is for a year, their emergency regulation is for one year. So that's the kind of window we have to collect data.
I'll add, I'll add the caveat that in the conversation with the state water board that they have stated there's the ability to expand that year. So at this moment, it's an unknown, but currently it's set at one year. Supervisor Pisces?
Yeah, I have a question about the, the draft conservation plan, is that public?
So there is a version on the county's website. There are a few aspects that we are at a revisiting, so it's still in review. We're, I mean, somewhat optimistically trying to get it done by the summer and plan to do some public outreach. It's not public yet, but we do want to get public input once we get the scientists all in as agreement, as close to agreement as we can. So we understand that it's been a six-year process, it's been a long process. When we do have it ready to roll out for the public, we're coming back here to talk about it and we'll use whatever venues we can to, to get it in front of the public, to explain it, to answer questions and to solicit feedback.
So the one that's on the website currently is, is the old one and not the one that's, not the current draft that's being worked on? And so you think later this summer or next fall or?
That's what we're targeting, we're targeting this summer for a public rollout and then to ask for signatures. So it's, I mean, to work with one state agency is, is enough of a headache to get all the state agencies and, and the federal government on board with a document is somewhat challenging. Basically, what we're trying to do is identify objectives, tasks. It's going to be very similar to what's, we're working on what's online. So that, we're taking that draft that's on, on the website, on the county's website and just kind of essentially nitpicking it, saying like, you know, well, this doesn't go far enough or this goes too far, we should also look at this, you know. For example, the, the population target has been kind of the focal point lately, we're really drilling in and trying to get it either to a point where everybody's happy with, which frankly isn't going to happen, but get it to a point where people are happy that it's on the road to being adequate.
Any further questions or comments? I have a couple of questions. Appreciate the, I forget the, the title of it, but the population estimates and what we're looking for. Completely understand that you want those consecutive years because one piece of data point does not provide an answer if something has been solved or if it's a one-year blip. But I, I do want to ask a couple of questions. One is temperature. I know that, I'm coming from a point of ignorance over here, I have certain knowledge, but not enough knowledge when it comes to the hitch, but I know in our conversations we're having about salmon, especially salmonids, temperature very much matters to their life existence and their ability to go downstream all the way down to the ocean. What is the sensitivity to temperatures when it comes to a very shallow lake that can easily go up and down depending on how the climate is interacting with the water?
That is an excellent question and we don't have, it's called critical thermal maximum and minimum, and there are very specific physiological studies that we can conduct. We don't have that information for Clear Lake Hitch, we have it for blackfish and blackfish are pretty tough and closely related to hitch. You know, we have this hypothesis that Thule lakes can, can serve as somewhat of a nursery and for those of you who have been up there in the summertime know that it can get very warm, oxygen levels can get very low, can be, you know, algal blooms. We're fairly confident that hitch are, are pretty tough, I mean, they're, they're, most native minnows are, which is what allowed them to not go extinct so far, but we don't have the exact critical thermal maximum. And that also varies with the temperature that they experience. So if you keep a fish at a warm temperature, their critical thermal maximum will actually be higher. So it gives them a little bit of wiggle room to an extent. We do look at temperature a lot, mostly on timing, migration timing, which, you know, 10 degrees C is when we tend to see them move up into the tributaries, when the tributary temperatures reach that temperature, but we haven't looked at the upper bounds.
And so one of the reasons I bring that up is, and, and you mentioned it, that you're limited to those four sites at this moment in time from getting that, those data points. And I know that you're looking at the shallower portion of the lake, which potentially could get warmer and while maybe they're not sensitive to the point of die-off or, or impact specifically to their physical being, but if I can find shade and get out of the sun, I'm not dying from the sun, but I prefer the shade, is it possible they're moving down to their lower arms where there's deeper waters, where they can find cooler water, where it's more comfortable? And one of the reasons I say that is, are you planning to have some data sets from the lower arms to be able to kind of see the difference? Because again, where'd all these fish come from when you had such a minimal amount? And I'll get to some questions about Thule Lake, but I'm just kind of curious if you're aiming to go to lower arm just because it has that, it's not extremely deep and it's still interconnected with all of the waters of the lake, but could that be one of those scenarios where we're seeing a movement of the population to deeper waters to get more comfortable with the temperatures?
Definitely, yeah, that's a great question and it's called sort of microhabitat selection. Fred Fager's study, so the USGS study samples throughout the lake. And so they do, it's, it's a random stratified method, whereas our method is, is a fixed location. The benefit of having this random stratified method is you randomize the locations throughout the lake, including depth, so Fred samples at all depth. They drop their gill net down in deep sections throughout the lake. He did some analysis, it hasn't been published yet, but he did show it, I believe at the State Water Resources Control Board hearing, showing that 2023 was an average year water quality-wise, so as far as temperature and dissolved oxygen. So Fred's fairly confident that the signal that we're getting in the data, the increase in catch, is not an artifact of, of water quality, of water temperature. So, you know, this is a preliminary analysis, so of course a big asterisk there and, you know, I don't want to steal Fred's thunder when he's going to publish this. That's a whole nother presentation, but we're fairly confident that we have a good handle on the population trend in that the observations made by the tribes line up well with our observations at the department and line up well with the USGS results. So this is again, using multiple threads of evidence to support our decision-making.
Right. And just something of interest, just because I know that other fish are definitely being impacted by it and just curious about that. So for Thule Lake, I'm completely ignorant to this, but what tributaries lead to Thule Lake and what tributaries are available during drought years that they, because I'm assuming based on the numbers and the sizes that you found this year with this theory that they may have been sheltered in Thule Lake or other smaller bodies of water, how were they spawning if they were not reaching or accessing tributaries like we typically historically believe that's their spawning grounds? What, what were they using? Was something available or was it within the lake itself?
Right, and so I'm going to go all the way back to 1960 and there's an old report, it's by Kimsey Edall, where he observed, he collected observations of spawning on the shore of the lake. And so Clear Lake Hitch can spawn within Clear Lake, but we believe that carp, and this is going back to that report from the 60s, that carp, so he observed spawning, you know, with, you know, light wind wave action, so you need some water movement, but immediately after the spawning took place, carp would come in and just vacuum up all the eggs. And so we don't want to write off Clear Lake in that like, you know, well, they're not going to survive there, they can't spawn there, but we do want to focus on the tributaries because we believe that's where we can get more bang for our buck for restoration efforts. You know, we know that they can successfully spawn in the tributaries because we see it. As far as Thule Lake, it's Scott's Creek that feeds into Thule Lake and there's some passage issues up there that I believe are going to be addressed by the Wildlife Conservation Board grant. And then minnows are just, they're kind of opportunistic, so they're going to take advantage of where they can and we know this when we see flooding, they'll go wherever. If we left fields flooded, if fields were flooded constantly, they would be spawning there too. So they are somewhat generalists in my view, we'll, there's some working on the conservation strategy that will argue with me on this, but I do believe that if, if they have the spawning habitat, they will spawn and will be successful and we're looking for places where we can maximize that. But they likely do spawn in small, in small ponds if conditions are right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Just one last thing because you mentioned Thule Lake and I'm thinking of, we do have barriers, including our reservoirs, so I'm so dumb, last year, man, I was like ready, let's convert a bathtub, I was ready to freeze fish to save DNA. But is there a way to make use of these isolated water bodies to actually serve as mini fisheries in times of drought and what have you? Or can we, I'm going to use Highland Springs as an example, we don't have a fish ladder there, but either they're already running upstream of the dam or if they're not, is there potential habitat up there that we should actually be considering the establishment of mini fisheries, not the expensive kind where we have to worry about genetic purity and stuff like that, but kind of natural mini fisheries to take advantage of habitat that may be blocked currently and we don't have a mechanism, kind of the reverse of a fish rescue or you would try to get them out down to the lake after they're stranded, but when they're spawning, can we rescue them into some prime habitat so we can create some populations that are geographically isolated to the point that they could survive and maybe be good genetic stock after a time of extended drought? Or am I just back to the bathtub? Am I just making it up as I go?
No, I mean, I think the, and this is just me personally, I think the solution is, is connectivity, is, you know, they, they will spawn if they can. And so by improving the connectivity, by allowing access to Thule Lakes and allowing fish to move between Thule Lakes in and out, both directions, I think is, is really the solution. So really, we want to maintain not only genetic diversity, but diversity of habitat, so that means diversity of prey items. And I guess if, the common theme is, is, you know, a lot more is better. So if we have many tributaries that they can go into or many little isolated ponds that they can utilize, and this life history diversity is really one of the strengths of many California native fish, so trout, steelhead and rainbow trout, or one of the ideas that come to mind is a trout can give birth to a steelhead, a steelhead can give birth to the trout. And so this allows the population to both persist in the ocean and in freshwater. And so that's what we're seeing with hitch is that we need the lake to be sustainable, we need the lake to allow them to survive, and we need the tributaries to allow them to survive, so that if we have multiple bad years in the tributaries, the lake population can come and repopulate that.
I do have one last question. So you had that population estimate and the, the kind of strategic amount that we're looking for. The one that we did not check off for this past year was the visual. Can you explain how the visual works and how water quality impacts the visual number? And I know you said it was an average year for water quality, but just kind of curious how that functions in different years?
Yeah, so the, when I said it was an average year for water quality, that was within the lake. The visual survey is in the tributaries, it's limited to the Big Valley watershed. I believe there are 20 locations where our district biologist goes and it's literally going to a bridge and looking and counting fish. So under high water, that could limit the ability, and also fish move, so the timing also affects it also, so. also affects it also, so you could, you know.
Stand still.
Right, you can't tell fish to stand still. And that's what, you know, that's why we need so many different methods to to bolster our our decision-making, because no one is perfect, each has their own limitations.
I bet that's a good use of potential AI to do the counting for you. If there's no further comments or questions?
Well, I have a question, comment, not related to this presentation, but when pulling this before and asking for a presentation, we, you know, wanted to understand from staff how, what were the different programs and projects that we had going in relation that were tied to the emergency? And so I don't know if you, if staff is going to be speaking at this time about that, because that was one of the questions I wanted to see, and I did speak with Scott, Director De León, yesterday about it.
Is he on to discuss? Director De León?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what was the question?
You can repeat that.
Just an update from the county's perspective on what we have been working on this last year, what grants or funding opportunities are out there and projects going forward that are tied to our emergency.
Oh, boy, that's, it's a fairly lengthy list. I I know the projects that I've been working on, there was a discussion about the Kelseyville, the Kelsey Creek Fish Ladder, and I've been assisting with that. And, you know, I don't know if Jordan or Angela might have a better answer for that. I know that there are several, several projects that are related to creek clearing, obstruction clearing. So I'm sorry, I don't have all the details there. Catch me a little bit off guard, but perhaps Jordan or Angela might have a better answer.
Sure. Hi, this is Jordan Beaton. I can shed some light on that. Because of the local emergency declaration that the board declared, we have received more funding and have been able to prioritize more of our restoration projects. Middle Creek Project, Clover Creek Restoration, we're looking to do a sediment removal project in Coal Creek. We just received that WCB grant for $2.7 million for looking at Highland Dam feasibility study, Bell Hill culvert removal, and Tulley Lake barrier removal, as well as outreach and education. We've also been able to fast-track two well installations for the purpose of water table monitoring in Adobe and Kelsey Creek. So those are just a few. We also received $500,000, no, yes, $500,000 of congressional funds for Adobe Dam feasibility, not Highland, and Kelsey Creek detention structure repairs and gauges. So that's, that's a few. We, I think we've got a couple more that I'm I'm probably forgetting. Hopefully that answers your question.
I think that gives us a really good idea of what this has opened up for us in order to make attempts to have a solution. I'm going to open this up for.
I just got one more, I just thought of it, thought of it earlier, but then I realized I shouldn't bring it up now. I remember in one of the presentations, they talked about how, I'm going to call it Mud Lake, and people are going to get upset with me out of Blue Lakes, but Mud Lake was connected, and that might be a possible habitat. And are there any initiatives to look and see if that's possibly a place where some of the hitch are living during these timeframes?
Yeah, so our district biologist is going to be looking at Tulley Lake closer. He did sample, I believe it was Lower Blue Lakes in 2021.
Lower Blue Lakes is what it's.
And didn't detect any, and I think it's been a while since he's been to Upper Blue Lakes. I know one of the fish rescues, I believe in 2021 or 2022, were released into Lower Blue Lakes, but we haven't detected any species, any hitch there as of yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just appreciate the work and the collaboration going on. Ultimately, Bruno, you're always bringing this up as the data, you know, as we're moving forward, and I appreciate those timelines and looking at setting those data counts as we move forward. You know, also, two key terms, barriers and the flows of the streams, I think are really important, barriers being one of the biggest ones, and I know you put, you know, at least one project up there, but there's many other with vegetation abatement, gravel, other things like that. And we talked about some of those conversations too, because it's not only just for the fish habitat, but it's also for our communities around the lake and everything, making sure we have the proper flows, you know, as we're moving forward. So appreciate the information, appreciate you coming here and spending the time with us.
Thank you.
And I will add that some of these attempts to aid and assist the hitch to have spawning grounds and being able to go back to the lake, that also helps in flood control and other issues that we're dealing with that create other problems. And so there's, there's some solutions that have multiple reasons why we really should focus on those things, because it's not just one thing that it helps out with. There's, there's a whole lot more that we can gain from cleaning up our streams and making sure that they work appropriately. And I'm going to open it up for public comment, and please come on up to the microphone. We're going to start in the board chamber, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Pat Scully. Got a question for you or a comment on the visual surveys. I think this past year, CDFW's first hitch sightings that they showed on their surveys were like April 7th. If you looked on the, we talked about asking if there's other ways to report, the Clerk website, anyone can get on there and report, and they had observations of up to 1,000 hitch on March 15th, so three weeks before. And we were seeing them in Thompson Creek, we were seeing them in Dobie Creek well before. I talked to Ben about it, but if you're going to use that as one of the metrics in your, in your population targets, that gets really subjective if you're not up here looking. We, we personally witnessed more than, what, was it 2,500 or 2,700? More than that in a single location on a single day in Adobe Creek. So I think as long as you're going to have that there, you got to figure out a way not to make it so subjective. So, and then I just had one comment, you showed the one picture of the creek crossing that you made the fish ladder on. And I actually had, I went out and took some videos of the fish going up, and it's still real difficult for the fish to go up there, and I'm just wondering why, and and maybe you need a permit to do this, can't you get a big dump truck full of gravel and put it on the downside of that? That, that barrier's been created over the last 50 years. You know, it seems like there's pretty easy solutions to those, because that fish ladder is still very difficult for the fish to go up. So, anyway, just.
Yeah, thank you, and appreciate you speaking to Ben and sharing the data with Ben. I do want to say that the importance in observations is standardization. So, so Ben goes and does a standard fixed observation, and so that kind of makes it, that actually makes it less subjective.
But if his timing's not right, like last year.
If we can't, if we can not have a conversation between the seats, if you want to get back up to the microphone, I don't want to stop you from speaking.
All right. If his timing's off because of seasonal variations, and he kind of explained they do the same thing every year, well, last year, we saw far and away more hitch than we've seen in a long time. But it didn't, I mean, he had, I guess it was better than it had been, but it didn't even closely reflect what was really happening. So.
Thank you, I appreciate the comment.
I have a question about that and what Pat said. Is there any way to bring, like, some video surveillance in or anything so that if there's a change in weather conditions, we never really know when spring is coming here? And is that something that can be helpful? And I know Super or Chair Sabatier's made a joke about AI, but if there's a way to have just constant monitoring of the creeks during this time, then we would probably know how to time physical surveillance better.
Yeah, and we could design that study. I think the big barrier would potentially be vandalism, if we put a bunch of expensive equipment out on the creek. But we do use, the department does use, they're called DITSON cameras, it's a type of sonar, and they've used this around, you know, diversions in the delta and a few other waterways. There are, yes, the short answer is yes, there are other methods that we could use, and we can improve our methods, yes.
Next for public comment.
Brock Zoller from Kelseyville, thank you very much for your presentation and thank everything supervisors do. I was only going to object, really, that you should pay a little more attention to the citizen science. There's been a lot of different groups that have measured the hitch population over the years in different ways, each one of them. But if you look at the trend line that describes, you know, how many of the year's efforts that they've been doing for each one of them, none of them really are suggesting that the hitch are going away. And you say that your point of the hitch bumping up greatly last year can't really be relied on, but, you know, they use the point where they weren't there the year before as one point to rely on the fact that they are endangered. So obviously, that's not entirely true, it's just how you want to interpret the data. I say look at all the trend lines and put those all together, and that tells you that the hitch are not going away. They have their ups and downs for various reasons. One of them is drought. It's obvious, if you look at the data, that when there's a drought, why the hitch numbers that people see are not there. The other thing is, if you looked at the Blue Lakes in relation to Clear Lake, this is about the size of Blue Lake compared to this room here, which is Clear Lake. So all of the fish that were in Clear Lake last year can't possibly have come out of Blue Lakes. So it's just a little bit hard to understand really how you can come to that as the most important thing. There, obviously, it seems to me spawning in the lake, and we're just not measuring the places. So I don't think they're going away, that's my only point.
Thank you. And I, I definitely can appreciate the the wanting to share any and all information, but I also understand that science needs apples to apples to be able to truly get to final data and conclusions. But maybe there's a way to provide some training so that you can get citizen science in a way with maybe a greater margin of error, but at the same time, using the same methods to be able to provide numbers from those that are seeing things and experiencing things out there, just to see if that can help out with the greater understanding. But it does need to have very similar methods, or else it's going to be very difficult to be able to compare and contrast. Any other public comment on this item? Let's see what we have, we have a hand up in Zoom. And let's go ahead and open up for Michelle Scully.
Good afternoon, supervisors and Mr. La Luz. I wanted to make two comments. My husband, Pat, spoke about the observations that we had as citizens in Adobe Creek. We live just down the way from Adobe Creek. And towards his point of when the observations first began, where boots on the ground can really help versus agencies that are here at intermittent dates, I just wanted to make the point that I completely understand what Chairman Sabatier said about citizen science and apples to apples, but just as perspective, my graduate degree is in biology with an emphasis in ecology, and I used to do surveys for Fish and Wild, Fish and Wildlife and U.S. Fish and Wildlife, so I was trained in surveys, and I would second what he said about the number we saw in Adobe Creek being greater than the number reported out of all the tributaries for 2023. So that concerns me, because in the draft population target, using Mr. Hewings' number of 2,548, that number, we could say, was actually met in one, one tributary. And as, I'm not hearing any inclusion of our partners in the tribes. I'm on the board's Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, and we have regular reports from Big Valley and Robinson. And Big Valley alone reported over 29,000 rescues during the spawn, and I don't recall offhand what those cohorts were in terms of adults and juveniles, but that number alone seems to be ignored when we're kicking out this whole year of saying it doesn't meet the parameters for the draft population target. How does that work?
Yeah, appreciate your question, and again, it's all about standardization. So we rely on Ben's visual survey because it's consistent, he's always out there at the same time making the same observations, fully acknowledging there are limitations. But the trends over time that Ben has observed are also reflected in the population estimate and in Fred Faver's data. So we could, I'm open to developing a citizen science program, it will take effort, it will take some staff time, and providing that training, but part of the solution would be standardizing the observations that the tribes make and standardizing the observations that that citizens make and comparing that to the established protocols. So the, the main thing is consistency, though, of always returning and looking for the same, you know, taking the measurement at the same place. If we take measurements at different places, then that other covariant of location also has some variability associated with it. And so Fred's survey comes from the opposite end where it's completely randomized. So he has no idea where he's going to sample until they actually do the planning, they run, you know, a computer program to randomly select the depth and the location, so that's completely randomized. So you either have to pick one or the other, either have a fixed location where you're making the observations and making consistent measurements, or completely randomize the study. So it's a steady design factor. I'm not opposed to incorporating citizen science, it just has to be done carefully, like all science.
So I have a question, oh, I'm sorry, Michelle, are you finished?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I understand, I mean, I've written a thesis myself, so I understand experimental design, but my question is, the, the tribes are out here on the ground all the time, and when you get a number reported, like over 29,000, I don't have my committee notes in front of me, it's pretty hard to look at that number and then look at the 2,548 and say, oh, shoot, we failed for this year, when, I guess, I'm, citizen science is an orange, but I would think that working with the tribes would be an apple.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The trends are reflected in the data, so if we look at previous years, the visual survey, the numbers were in the hundreds. And then this year, it was 2,000 and something, so we did see, or at least an order of magnitude increase, and that's because we're consistently sampling, if that makes sense. So to incorporate the tribe's data, we'd have to have a standardized study design.
So I'm wondering, with the task force, is that a priority to standardize with all of the different stakeholders that are interested in monitoring? And that has been one of the priorities that we've given to the Fish and Wildlife Committee that Michelle's on, is local data collection. And so I'm wondering if that can, if it's not a priority, can it be a priority so that we can expand?
Yes, that's definitely a priority, is to get all of our programs to work together in unison and talk to each other. We're also, so not only standardizing methods and data reporting, but also we, another big priority is to make a big data, I guess database is redundant, but a localized repository for all of the data where everybody can access it and use it. And so I'm happy to to work with the Fish and Wildlife Committee to create some standardized protocols, but it'll have to be done carefully. But yes, it's definitely something that we want to do, that to standardize all of our methods, not only for fish observations, but for water monitoring also.
And I would just add for, if we wanted to incorporate some video surveillance, there are several private property owners where vandalism wouldn't be an issue, that every year, they, they make their own observations and invite stakeholders out to do that monitoring.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. We have Sarah Ryan from Big Valley Band of Pomo.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sarah Ryan, the environmental director for the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians. And I, you know, heard our name a couple of times and just wanted to, to comment on that, and also a question for Felipe. First of all, thank you for that presentation, it was very interesting and some great questions and discussion. The number of fish that, or chi that Big Valley staff, with some assistance from Robinson and others, rescued this past summer and spring. and others rescued this past summer and spring was over 26,000. It was about 26,500 hitch or chay. This did happen over a period of months and so, and in multiple locations. And they were mostly newly hatched. And those are numbers that aren't normally, you know, those are fish that are not normally caught by any other method that Felipe was discussing. So we did, you know, plenty of times along Adobe Creek, saw lots of little puddles where they were stranded, just as has been our concern over many years of why there needs to be enough flow for the full time of the chay, you know, making it back to the lake after they've been hatched. So we were rescuing thousands upon thousands on a daily basis from puddles where they were going to die because they were, you know, there was no connectivity of the water. I also just wanted to say that I don't want, I hope people are not getting the, or that the board is not getting the sense that there is no standardization or communication amongst the agencies that are doing hitch observations. I mean, we meet and discuss things on a regular basis and, you know, there's been data collection going on for a number of years, at least in the Big Valley area, from our tribe. However, there's in this last year with all of these other agencies being engaged, which we're really happy about, there's a lot of communication going on. So, you know, it is important if there's going to be citizen science happening that there is training and standardization, as has been mentioned, because I remember years ago when Robinson Rancheria was going around looking at every creek in the county on a daily basis. They took that task on. And when we compared it to the data from the Chay Council, it definitely appeared that the same school of fish was being counted multiple times. And that's the problem with this, with that. And also, just as Felipe said, you know, there's a concern about misidentification. That thousand or more that Scully mentioned that was seen and reported on Clerk, we had people out there that day. Those were suckers. Those were not hitch. So it's important for people to, you know, to be, to get the identification correct because they look very similar, especially when there's a lot of water or just it's turbid. So anyway, thank you. I just wanted to make those comments.
Thank you for that. And let's see first if we have any new public comments. We have another hand up that already spoke. Nothing further from the chamber. Michelle Scully, if you can be brief, go ahead.
I just wanted to note that Luis Santana, as per my understanding, was also out at Adobe Creek confirming the presence of suckers. So for what that's worth, I mean, of hitch, sorry.
Thank you very much. And I see no further comments. I'll bring it back to the board for any final questions or comments before we conclude. Supervisor Green.
Just one last thing on the, on the community science. We all want to help. We're all interested in certainly their early contributions of observations, both by the tribes and by the Chay Council, focused on kind of observational science on the tribes. But I don't want to signal necessarily that we're so eager to create a fun and community science reporting app if there's not enough bang for the buck there, right? There may be a good use for community science in terms of alerting to you, hey, the spawn started over here, go look and go start your regular, more rigorous population modeling. There may be a public education component about educating people about what a hitch looks like and other lesser fish. But I'm kind of rethinking it. And the only reason I mention that is before we all go on and jump on the Clerk website and say, hey, we got to really pump up the volume on this. I don't want to do that and then have to lower my own expectations and the expectations of the community that we're going to place a certain value on that observational science. So I want to thank you for educating me on that. I'm going to have to kind of rethink my own thoughts on how much emphasis we're going to put on this when there may be a better use of the money and the limited staff time that you have available to really dive into some of the nitty gritty science. So I'm interested. I'll be chasing fish this spring for sure, but I don't necessarily need to burden people with my half-hearted observations if it's not going to be helpful. So, you know, we all want to be helpful. So if it's helpful, please let us know. If you think there are better uses of your time and energy, please let us know that as well.
Thank you for that.
You got the answer, the question answered about the, what feeds Tulley Lake?
Yeah. And I think that the answer was somewhat rhetorical in the sense during a drought, the creek is so low that it, the lake is just what's left of the lake. And that was kind of the question leading to if there's no creek, is it obvious that they are spawning within the lake? And the answer that I received, which I think is just an important one for all of us to recognize that the creeks are important, yes, but the continuing restoration of the lakeshore is also just as important because long-term droughts have happened in the past and that's probably how the hitch have remained in the lake historically during those long-term droughts. And long-term droughts will occur again, but if we don't rehabilitate some of the lakeshore to give them that kind of habitat, similar to what Middle Creek would offer, Middle Creek restoration, that that would create a different problem, another problem for the hitch where there is a potential suitable place for them during heavy drought years to be able to spawn. But we have unfortunately taken out a large portion of the tulies in the lake, which has unfortunately killed a lot of that habitat capability for them. So just another project. And I can't help but think of Dr. Lyons at all times when I'm thinking about the Tulley restoration. And I'll explain later. But thank you for asking.
And we have heard Director Turner talk about the ordinance that's being developed for the creek cleanout and, or yes, vegetation ordinance for the creeks. And that's coming out of the task force strategy. It's strategy? I thought it was connected. I thought she said she was sitting in those meetings and then the ordinance was being created. So is there an update on that? Do you know, Jordan?
Yes. Maria is sitting in on hitch task, no, conservation strategy meetings, yes. And Water Resources is working with her and their department in code to make some changes that include vegetation management within streams on private properties. But I'd like to note that we feel it's really important for our new director to be a part of that and we don't have a new director just yet.
Okay, so we don't have a timeline on what that looks like?
I do not have that timeline. That would be a question for Maria, I believe.
Okay. And you probably don't have answers to this, but these are the questions that I'm asking her is, you know, we always are looking for the ways to make it easier for property owners to manage their land and have less tape they have to cut through to get this work done. And it just seems like in my conversations with her that that ordinance was going to try to address these things so it's easier, people understand more clearly how this can work and how it can benefit their areas of the creek.
Yes, it will help property owners have more guidance on what they can and cannot do. I will also note that CDFW has done a really good job this year to give better guidance on what property owners can do. And we have, Water Resources has a fact sheet that folks can check out and that kind of highlights what CDFW, their rules, and it makes it a little easier for folks to understand.
Yeah. And we've had that conversation a few times here over the last year, but for a long time, most people just thought, oh, I can't do anything.
Yep.
And not touch the creek. So this is going to be really helpful.
Yes, I agree.
Just want to talk about some of the dates. I know last year they said, Scully said that around March 15th, you know, they were starting to see some stuff in the creek. Just want to make sure that's an important date is it's being moved up because April seemed like was where we started last year. I think you could just make sure that Ben has that and, you know, those things. Is there somewhere that our citizens can say, hey, we're starting to see them right now? Is there a number or that's you, Felipe? You put that up there on there?
That, the date of migration is variable, but we do rely on the tribal EPA, so Big Valley, Robinson Rancheria, Havemontal are all out there doing observations and we really rely on them to let us know when they are moving into the, into the tributaries.
And I know at the summit also, you know, committed the dollars to Lake County to help us move forward here. I know he also challenged the tribes to reach out and see if we can get some other MOUs put together because the important thing is, you know, having those folks out there to do the observations, help with the rescues. And I know that message was heard. We just got to get some more MOUs put in place so we have more boots on the ground too, not only from the tribal side, but community. You know, we know we have a lot of community members that are really interested in, you know, being out there watching. And so we'll look to hopefully continue that and get all the tribes signed up before next year.
If there's no further.
And that just reminded me, so stream gauges. So you're trying to do a stream flow model. I know they're expensive. I learned recently Scotts Creek is probably better situated than most of our other tributaries. Any push on the task force or within the strategy, draft strategy document that would either call for installation of new stream gauges on some of these more sensitive tributaries? Or is that a budgetary line too far that we just can't go there? So the flow calculations you're doing now, you're just showing up and doing manual flow measurements?
So Big Valley Rancheria does have maintained some flow gauges. USGS and DWR also maintain flow gauges. The conversation in the task force now is to keep funding in place to maintain the existing network. I believe there are two or three that were short-term funded. And I apologize, I don't recall exactly where they are off the top of my head, but we are looking for, for funding to continue the existing flow monitoring, the permanent in-place gauges. And then State Water Resources Control Board is also working on adding and maintaining or even taking control of some of the ones that are expiring. So we are looking for solutions, but right now the conversation is maintaining the current network and then we will start talking about expanding on it.
And I'm sorry, but I closed public comment. If I open it up, I'd have to open it up for everybody. Please let us know. If there's nothing further from board members, Mr. LaLuce, Ms. Beaton, thank you very much for keeping us informed and the public informed on this. We are definitely going to be asking you to come back, not next month, not in three months. I'm sure that it might be a little bit longer than that, but I think it's important for us to continue to be engaged in this conversation and just keep learning what you're learning because I think we're all kind of gaining knowledge as we get more data and get a better understanding of what's happening and what we need to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and take a quick five-minute break. And we will restart again at 2:30 and we will take up our 1:30 item from Agricultural Commissioner. All right, we are back. Before we start item 6.7, I do want to ask Vice Chair Crandall, I forgot to mention this when we came back from our lunch break and also closed session. Did we take any action on items 8.1 and 8.2 in closed session?
No action taken.
And we will return to closed session at the end of this open session. But for now, thank you very much. We will continue with our item 6.7, consideration of presentation of the 2223 Waits and Measures Report. And this is our first. So thank you very much. Welcome. We have Ag Commissioner Vanderwall and Deputy Commissioner Upton. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you. Is the mic on?
It will be as you keep talking.
Okay. So thank you. So yes, so today I'm actually here as Sealer of Waits and Measures, Catherine Vanderwall, and my deputy, Sam Upton. So and I'd like to thank Sam for actually compiling the report that was presented in the agenda packet. So this is the first Waits and Measures report that we have done for Lake County. And actually, our photo right there is from our archives. So it's kind of a historical Lake County Waits and Measures photo. So our current weight truck is newer than that, but not by much.
Not by much.
Was it going to let me advance? No.
Yeah, if you go to next.
I can go to next? Okay. Oh, I see. Okay, thank you. So the presentation today and the report also coincides with National Waits and Measures Week, which is each year, March 1st through 7th is recognized as this. And the theme for this year is staying relevant. So Waits and Measures Week commemorates John Adams signing of the federal Waits and Measures Law on March 2nd, 1799. So what is Waits and Measures and why is it important? Why is this something that we should care about? Because Waits and Measures impacts almost every single person, every single day. So anytime you make a purchase, Waits and Measures is involved. Oh, there we go. Okay. So Waits and Measures provides consumer protection and equity in the marketplace. So the summary is based off our fiscal year 2223 because we, that's our reporting period that we report to the California Department of Food and Ag, Division of Measurement Standards. So during that timeframe, we had 231 unique business locations were inspected, 1,048 commercial devices inspected, and 19 consumer complaints were investigated. So these consumer complaints range from anything from submeter billing issues, could be like CRV issue, or, you know, somebody went to a store and they were overcharged. So they were charged the incorrect price. So some of the commercial devices registered in Lake County, so these are total, these are not inspected every single year. They are on an inspection frequency schedule. So we have 778 gas pumps, 176 counter and computing scales. So these are the smaller scales. So think about like when you go, you know, to the deli and you're like, oh, I want a pound of that ham, that type of scale. Or, you know, you're buying frozen yogurt and you put it on the scale because they're charging you by the weight. So those types of scales. 57 large capacity scales. So these would be like our vehicle scales and other large capacity scales. 60 propane meters. So these are like the stationary propane dispensers. You might see it like gas stations where you go and you fill up your five-gallon propane container. And this also includes like the delivery trucks that deliver propane fuel to somebody's house. So 1,658 electric submeters and 1,653 vapor submeters. So those are like, in Lake County typically, those are propane submeters. So the electric and vapor submeters, those typically are found in like mobile home parks or apartment complexes where the utility comes into a master meter and then it's, you know, divided out to the individual tenants or units. And then 51 cannabis scales. Just keeping up with my notes here. So just kind of overview of what we do. So the presentation's not all-inclusive. So if anybody ever had any questions or wanted to know more details, I would really encourage people to contact our office. But some of our more day-to-day functions, you know, and the weighing and measuring devices that we do, I'm going to talk about. So part of what we do is we determine if these devices are suitable for commercial use. So, you know, a lot of people, when they're getting started, they want to go buy a scale, which is fine, but we really try to educate people on, you know, you need to buy what's called a type-approved scale. So this is like a scale, or any other device has been vetted through a process and issued a certificate saying that's suitable for commercial use. And then, of course, it's suitable for the use. You know, you don't want to get like a ounce or gram scale if you're going to be weighing something like 100-plus pounds. So making sure it's appropriate. And then we test these devices to determine their accuracy. So this is just kind of an example, you know, the range of scales, like I mentioned. So this is just kind of an example, you know, the range of scales, like I mentioned, anything from like the counter scale at the deli to a livestock scale to a truck scale. So anytime, you know, people purchase something by weight, our office checks those scales. So petroleum inspections. So when we do these inspections, we're testing for accuracy. We have what are called provers. So staff actually pump out fuel and diesel to make sure that, you know, that the device is working correctly. So when you go to the gas station, you know, you're actually getting what you're paying for. We sample for quality standards. So oftentimes, we will get complaints, whether it's gas or diesel, you know, people will believe that there's there could be water in those products. So we will go and take samples and then send that to the state for testing. So we also check the advertising and labeling of petroleum products. So your motor oil, transmission fluid, all those different products. And then, of course, we respond to complaints. And then in that middle picture there is a skimmer. So those are the credit card skimmers, which are often put into the card readers at gas stations. So when our staff is out inspecting the gas stations, they're also looking for these devices as well. Okay. So meter inspections. So some of the more common meters that we inspect and test. So these are devices that are found on delivery trucks. As I mentioned earlier, you know, trucks that deliver heating fuel to your home, to the little five gallon propane tanks. So we also test other meters, like wire or cordage meters. If you're buying something by length, there are special meters for that. And then recently, we also began testing the water dispensers. So those are the, you know, the little units you find, whether they're inside of a store or outside of a store, you bring your own five gallon container and fill it up. So we've started testing those for accuracy as well. So submeters. So as I mentioned earlier, so these are meters that are commonly found in mobile home parks and apartment complexes, can be anything from electric propane to water meters. So we do not test non-submeters. So you know, things that like on your residence or if you're tied into a city water system, those water meters, we don't have jurisdiction to test those. So those are actually regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission. So price verification, this program right now, we currently just do, we respond to consumer complaints. So this is like going into a business and then doing a random selection of samples. And then you're taking it up to the register and making sure everything's ringing up as the posted price. So you're looking for any price errors or discrepancies. So this is something we're kind of exploring to, you know, it's a big deal to make sure that people are getting what they're paying for and they're not being overcharged. So to have a program like this that's robust, we would need a county ordinance, additional staff, because it's very time consuming to do these inspections. So this is something that we are exploring for the future. But as of now, we're just responding to complaints. So somebody goes to a store and they're like, you know, hey, I got overcharged. And then they bring us their receipt and then we do an investigation on that. So on the horizon, electric vehicle charging stations. So some of the challenges with these devices is determining who owns these meters. Oftentimes, a company comes in, sets up shop, we have no idea who owns the meter, who to contact, that type of thing. We are also working with the state. They have five testing standards that they loan out to counties. So they will actually come up, they train staff on how to use them, and then they'll loan them out to the county. And these are the standards are really expensive to purchase. So being able to borrow them from the state is great. And another challenge with the electric vehicle meters is doing the testing and the payment process because a lot of these require you to download an app on your phone and have a credit card on file. So it's not like a gas station where we can just go in and ask them to turn the pumps on, turn the pumps off. You know, these are devices that are just usually out in the middle of a parking lot somewhere. And the business that they're in doesn't own them and has no control over them. So we are working with the auditor's office on different ways on, you know, how we can do the payment part of this for the testing of these devices. And that's actually all I have. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much for this presentation. Supervisor Pieska.
I just want to thank you because as I mentioned earlier, we talk about this a lot, especially during our governance meetings and budget times. But it's really nice to see and understand, especially for the public, how you operate and how we want to have transparency with the process and everything that you buy. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Anything else? Supervisor Green?
I guess you're not doing counter scales for cannabis. So that would be on the cultivation side, wet weight of scales.
No, we, you want to answer this then?
Because most of the retail stuff is prepackaged. So are you?
Yeah, so we do test cannabis scales. Part of that track and trace program requires a Waymaster certificate and license, which they get through the state. And so in order to enter stuff into the track and trace, you need to have a legally defined weight, which is what you'd have the Waymaster certificate for. And for the Waymaster, you need a certified scale. So we do, because of the Waymaster, we need to also test those scales.
So most of those 51, whatever, were cultivators or manufacturers?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have some concerns about the future because right now it doesn't seem like there's a standardized format of all of the EV stations at this moment. I think eventually we'll get to like our phones where it'll be a C rather than all kinds of different unique proprietary connections. But I think that will create a little bit of a difficulty because you're going to have to buy different connections to measure each one individually. So that's a little bit of a concern right there. Right now, it's just, it's kind of Wild, Wild West for EVs. And eventually, I think we will get that standardization. And it'll be a little difficult as you're forced to measure that those gauges until we get to that point. But other than that, I learned a lot by going through your presentation and preparing for this meeting. I knew what you did, but I did not know to the depth of what it was. So appreciate that. And I'm sure that everyone else that is listening is also learning from this. So thank you.
Yeah.
What did you say?
Yeah, I learned a whole bunch too. But, you know, the EV charger, that was very interesting how that moves forward. Do you how much it is, you say very expensive, the tester? Do you have any idea on the cost for that? Because?
Well, there's a couple of issues with it. There's the fast chargers, the DC, and then the slower AC. And currently, there isn't even an approved standard to test the DC, the fast chargers. I'd say most of the chargers we have in this county are AC. And I think one of those units is around 30,000, maybe a little more than that. Right now, a lot of, not a lot of counties are jumping in on it. So if we were to jump in, we could certainly get the state one, probably without too much trouble. And I do believe they have a lot of different styles of plugs with that standard. So we could handle probably everything we have in the county now with the current state standard.
And also, see, right at the beginning here, starting with the deficit on the budget, right? Unless I'm reading it wrong, Waits and Measures expenditures, 180,100 Waits and Measures revenue, 92,558. So I think during budget time, we want to make sure all of our departments have what they need. If we're spending more there, I hate to add more to the budget conversation, but, you know, that's a, that's a big thing right off the front there. And then communication, you know, the state is rolling out a bunch of funds to get EV chargers brought. We've talked about this for infrastructure needs. Appreciate you bringing up that, how we're going to test these things as we move forward, you know, to be a part of that is, you know, even if we're going after something that, if it's a grant that we put in to have that tester for ag departments, we can do those things as we're helping build that infrastructure across the county.
Right. And then the expenditures or the revenue, I'm sorry, in the report, a lot of that's generated from our device registration. So our county has an ordinance that allows us to collect registration fees on these devices, which are limited in code as far as the maximum amount that we can charge. But that was recently changed in legislation. So we will be bringing that ordinance back to update our fees and the fee schedule.
Okay. Because I think we can charge what it costs us. And right now, we're not doing that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a very dumb question, but I'm curious. When you're measuring these things, like, for example, you measure the 10 gallons of fuel, what do you do with that fuel? Do you just give it back? Because there's a more industrial process to put that into the wells and propane and everything else as you test those things? What do you do with the product?
So, yeah, we return it back to wherever we, wherever it came from. So at gas stations, we'll pump it out and then pour it back into the inlet fill pipe. With trucks and stationaries, it'll go back in the truck or in the propane tank. That kind of is where the electric vehicle thing is different because that's something we can't return. Like, once we're drawing power out of a charger, it's just dissipated. You know, basically, the standard is like a heater unit. So we're testing it, but the electricity is going into something that just heats up and dissipates the energy. So that it just goes away. So we essentially have to pay for it. But everything that we currently test, it can be returned.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? I'm going to open it up for public. Any comments from the public on this item? I see no hands up in Zoom and no one rushing to the microphone. So I'll bring it back. And I believe it's just a presentation, no action or direction needed. Thank you very much. Educational on my end.
Thank you.
Is this going to be a regular thing like the crop report? Just, just, just asking? So we will move on to item 7.2, consideration of changing the committee assignments. And so I brought this forward as an agenda item. There was a request that I received via email, a personal request, to see if it was possible to rearrange our ag advisory board or ag advisory council. And one of the requests was for, and as stated in the memo, but I'll repeat it, for purposes of continuity, for purposes of expanding the scope of jurisdiction and coverage of more ag properties and land, and also in light of conversations like what we just had earlier today, and ensuring that we are continuously moving forward and striving for better relationships between groups within our county. The request was to ask if Vice Chair Crandall was interested in joining the ag advisory. The only person that I have spoken with was Vice Chair Crandall because there was no purpose in bringing this if he was not interested in joining the committee. And so obviously, I want to open it up for discussion and hear others' comments and seek a response to the request that I had received. And see if that is something that the board is interested in making change on. And I don't know if those that are on the ag advisory want to start with their comments or if Vice Chair Crandall, if you wish to make a comment.
And we discussed it. I thought, yeah, if it's something that's possible, I wouldn't mind doing it. I'm already doing some things with the Farm Ranch and Rural Communities Advisory Committee. And, you know, I have no problem doing so. But I, you know, of course, it's the will of the board and I understand the continuity situation as well.
And thank you for adding that. That is an extra committee that you are on through the?
RCRC.
RCRC and the EPA.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I did find this item curious for process questions, number one. Never mind the merits of or the qualifications of Supervisor Crandall versus myself. But on the process, I'm aware that this request came down from a member of the ag advisory committee. I did want to review briefly the bylaws. I printed out copies for those interested. And I'm not aware, given the limited scope of those bylaws, that the chair or any individual member of the advisory committee, I mean, they can make a request. I guess there's no law against it. But I also don't see anything within the bylaws that would authorize the committee as a whole to bring such a request. It's kind of unusual, much less a single individual on the, on the committee. And for every point that was raised, yeah, it could enhance continuity, also could disrupt the continuity that the sitting supervisors already assigned to that committee have brought. I've been on this committee for a year. And I don't know if it's been all, you know, wine and roses, but I don't think it's been a horrible journey for me at least. And I'll leave it to the members of the committee to chime in if they wish on that. Importantly also, is as it was explained to me the first time I was appointed, traditionally, and again, it's not set in stone on the bylaws, traditionally, the two largest ag districts, five and four, have had those appointments. So it's no disrespect that all of our districts, with maybe the exception of yours, would have a fair, fair amount of agriculture present within it. But past practice has been to kind of rely on District Four and District Five to do the heavy lifting on that. And then, yeah, so no real objection to Supervisor Crandall's CV, but it kind of conversely kind of seems like a commentary on my qualifications or lack thereof. So I'm going to leave it at that right now. I would like to stay on there. And again, on the continuity question, not just me, we're having an election day to hopefully narrow down the field of candidates who hope to succeed me on the board next year. And going back again to the traditional allocation of seats, I want to make sure that the incoming supervisor is not kind of frozen out of this over some quest to provide continuity. So leave it at that.
And I appreciate the comments. And there is one thing that I forgot to mention. I know it was a discussion with Vice Chair Crandall about the idea of an exchange and not just a change of one committee assignment. That way, it would be still fair to provide same amount of committee assignments. And Supervisor Pieska?
Well, it's a relatively new committee. It's only a few years old. And so, oh, and also, the supervisors sit in non-voting seats. And, you know, if it's a request coming from the committee, I'm okay with honoring it. And then as far as going forward, that would be the board in January to make the decisions on what next year's committee assignments look like.
And I will clarify that the request did not come from the committee. It just came from an individual.
An individual on the committee.
They did not signify their position within the committee. And just want to, want to make sure and clarify that.
Uh huh.
Any further comments or conversation? I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Just in the instance of transparency, if you would identify the individual.
Yes, Sharon Zoller. Okay, let's open it up for public comment. Anyone have any comment for this item? Please come on up.
Hi, guys. Rebecca Harper, Lake County Farm Bureau. I just, first of all, wanted to say, regardless of what the decision to assign or unassign ends up being, Michael, I think you've done a great job. And I don't think that any request on, on behalf of an individual from the committee has anything to do with your qualifications or the perception of your service while, while spending your time on the committee. So I first, regardless of what happens, would like to say thank you for your service in the past and whether that stays the same moving forward. I think you've done a great job. From my perspective, I think that there are a lot of ways in which, especially recently, tribal communities and traditional agricultural communities have been interacting. So from that perspective, I think that it may be beneficial to have a, you know, to have EJ as a tribal member on the committee and to be getting that perspective before issues come to a full board level. And so maybe there's potential for more interaction between those communities as, at a lower level before things elevate. That would be one potential benefit that I would see. Otherwise, you know, I think that it's the will of the board. And I, I enjoy attending ag advisory committees and will enjoy working with whoever the appointed supervisor is. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Zoller. So thank you for bringing this forward. And you stated the, Hi, I'm Sharon Zoller. So thank you for bringing this forward, and you stated the, the thoughts behind it. I appreciate Rebecca's addition. It's, it's very salient to our working together, particularly with all the various issues that have come forward in the last year and a half that have, I don't want to say bubbled up, because we've just been talking about water, but absolutely appreciate being able to build a, build a better communication with, with the tribes and the Native Americans in, in, in our, in our county, who, you know, who are the first stewards of our land. So, and again, this, this is not a, this is a personnel matter, not a personal matter. So, and I brought it forward. I had a question posed to me, why wasn't it brought forward earlier? The reappointments of the committees was not done until February, so the assignments had already been made. And so I wouldn't be so presumptuous as to assume that I would be reappointed until I got the letter. So I appreciate your consideration, and will certainly abide by whatever your decision is. Thank you.
Any other public comment? I see none in the chamber, and none on Zoom, and so bringing it back to the board. Supervisor Pyska?
Was there a discussion on a trade?
Couldn't have a discussion. I know that there was with Vice Chair Crandall.
Were there options for a trade?
I'm open to, I mean, if this moves forward, I'm open to pick of the litter. If there's something that Supervisor Green sees that he would like to be on, or maybe that would like to switch with, or if he just, if he wants to stay on, and we just go that route. I mean, of course, it's up to the board. But I have, so I was, we were talking, I was thinking area agency on aging, but I didn't know if that would be ideal for, for that. I know that right now, I'm the, let's see, I got a couple, I got the...
You're the chair of AAA, though.
Right.
That might be difficult.
There is the Blue Ribbon Committee. Well, I mean, Michael's on that with me as well.
And we can do possibly in the clean water. I know that you went and became the alternate.
That's right.
And switched that, and I can be the alternate.
Office space. Solid Waste Task Force.
Any other?
I'm open to those.
I'm going to make a guess that you're not interested in the change, therefore not interested in the offer of any other position.
Yeah, I'll let you guys engineer this, for sure.
Well, I'll, I want to make a motion, but I would, I guess we'll have to do it in separate motions, then. Will I move that we make a change to the Agricultural Advisory Committee in exchange Supervisor Green for Vice Chair Crandall?
Okay, there's a motion.
I'll second it.
And there's a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
Okay. And I think that the secondary part to what Supervisor Pyska was mentioning is, now that that specific motion has been made and approved, is there a committee seat that would interest you, Supervisor Green, to take on? That Vice Chair Crandall is a part of?
No.
And that's something that at a later time, we can bring back if that changes? Okay. And so motion carries, and that closes, oh, I guess I should have opened it up for, I did.
You did.
Okay, good. And so that closes that item. And I believe that we have been through all of the above, minus our last closed session and calendars. And so, did I miss anything else? Okay. Who would like to begin with calendars?
Okay, I'll go.
Vice Chair Crandall?
So I got, there we go. So last week, we did the Lake County Recreation Authority meeting, and that was, we went off to a good start there. And we're going to be, I, pretty much, we just went over the mission, and then we're going to be doing, we put together another group to do, construct how the vision would look. We did a mission, and now we're looking at how the vision will go, and looking at some options in different areas around the unincorporated area. So, and then we went to the Sheriff's Gala on Saturday. That was really, really went well. I enjoyed it. There was a lot of action going on, and, gee, I didn't end up with any, with anything. I think it lost all, all bids, and, but I did have fun on the, there was a simulator that the, that the deputies use. That was pretty fun. I had a hard time not going back in line and trying. So, so that, that went really well. Enjoyed that, and was glad to see everybody there dressed, dressed to impress. And even the, the snow didn't take that whole thing out. So, so that, that's what, that was Saturday. Wednesday, this week, Wednesday, we have Agenda Review. I'll have East Region Town Hall, the CSA meeting. I'll go out to that in Spring Valley, Thursday, South Deal, and the Caltrans. And then I'll be doing the EPA Farm Ranch and Rural Community ad hoc meeting that I have every two weeks with them. And then, I think Friday, I'll be in Clear Lake Oaks doing some things. I think I'll meet you out there, Supervisor Sabatier. Monday, a meeting with the CAO. And I think I have my SERF meeting that day. Is that the second Monday? Yes, it is. So I'll have SERF that month, the 11th, Central Region Town Hall meeting. And then a space, well, a Space Committee meeting, then SERF. And so that's, I'll be back here next Tuesday.
Okay. Supervisor Pyska?
So, yeah, so I had NCO board meeting last week, and if everyone doesn't know, Patty Bruder's retiring. And so we're going to spend the next year, the rest of this year, looking for her replacement. And so we've got some extra meetings there. But that's, that's kind of the big news coming out of NCO. It's huge. So I had that meeting last week. Then I went straight to the Soto Bay evacuation meeting, community meeting at Conocda Harbor. And we had a lot of people come through, working on that draft. We're looking forward to having that finalized by the end of March. And then I had jury duty. And the recreation agency meeting that Supervisor Crandall was talking about, it's like, we're off to a very good start this year, fresh. We need a little bit of time off. But everyone came back with just an openness and willingness to move forward. And we will probably have to come back to the board and report maybe a change in strategy soon. One of the thoughts is maybe going after a really large project right out of the gates is maybe a little ambitious. And there are some things that we can work together collaboratively on with the partners for recreation in the county. So that's kind of where we're starting this year, and starting fresh. So don't expect an aquatic center next month. Yes. Sheriff's Ball was really a special event. The last time that we had a Sheriff's Ball was March 2020, and it was pretty much the last event any of us went to for a couple of years. It's right a few days before the shutdown. And this time, Sheriff Howe decided to bring it back to the Armory, which it had been at the Armory under Sheriff Mitchell. This is really special, a totally different look and feel to the event, because obviously, it's a different sheriff. Raised a lot of money, a lot of people were there, a lot of staff were there. So it was a really special night. So I was glad I was able to go. And I know that you two couldn't make it, so, you were missed. But it was, it was great. So I, there are several ongoing meetings. I had one yesterday. I've got another one tomorrow morning about the transition in NCO. So that is going to take a significant amount of effort. We have an executive committee that we've been building a strategy with. So it's going to take a lot of effort, but it's going to, it's a good investment to make sure that we have the, the right fit for that person. And then last night, I was at the KBA meeting, and there was, there was a, well, I guess I'll wait till next week, and we can talk about it next week. Tomorrow, I've got the, another leadership meeting with NCO. We are headed to Robinson tomorrow.
Yeah.
For their citizens business meeting. And then Thursday, I'm meeting with Jason Terramino, our new PG&E rep. We're going to block out a couple of hours in Cobb and talk about some of our issues with PG&E. Then geothermal meeting in the afternoon. Friday, our Benefit Zone meeting, we're getting that going up again with C2D and Code Enforcement for the Benefit Zone in the Riviers, for fire mitigation work. And then I've been invited to the Adventist event at, in Clear Lake. You're on that. Is anyone else going to that?
On the CH, the CHNA?
Yes.
On Friday?
Yes. It, yes, I have it Friday. Okay, good. I want to make sure that we didn't have any conflicts, because it was a new event for me, but I had been invited, so I wanted to check in with all of you. And it looks like this Saturday and Sunday, I don't have anything going on, which is pretty amazing. And then meeting with Monday, and then back here on the 12th.
And that meeting's at 1:00 PM on Friday?
Yes, yes. Originally, I think it was at 2:00, and it's been moved up an hour.
That's why I was curious, because I have it in two places. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Supervisor Green, or Supervisor Simon?
Thank you. I'm meeting with the PG&E rep on Thursday as well. Looks like Continuum of Care, so I'll probably be tuning in on that. Friday, I may listen in. CSAG Government Finance Administration Policy Committee is doing a webinar on two proposed constitutional amendments for the November ballot. So I may listen in on that. I think that's about it.
Thank you. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, finished up the meeting today. Obviously, a big day, voting day. Please get out and vote. Very important that people get out and vote for all, everything that's happening all the way across country. So finish up today's meeting. Did, thank you very much, Jessica. I didn't have the Geothermal Committee meeting on there. Thursday, I got the South Deal meeting, and then after that, it'll be the Geothermal Committee meeting to get that done. Friday, obviously, meet with CAO Susan. And then have the Space Committee on Monday, and then back here on Tuesday for the board meeting.
Thank you very much. Tomorrow, meeting with the NACO Health Steering Committee that I'm on, continuing to try and push those, there might actually be two resolutions that I'm going to try to follow. One of them is extra support through Medicaid for doulas. That was submitted by a commissioner from Cook County in Illinois, and I'm going to be sharing that with our first five, and seeing if that's something that they want me to continuously follow and, and support. On Thursday, there's a CSAG Board of Directors meeting, so I'll be going there. And then the Lake County Continuum of Care. And then to close out that day, I'll be at the City Council meeting, where they'll be doing something similar to what we did today with, which is approving their list of projects to submit to Congressman Thompson. And then on Friday, starting off the day with Friends of Woodland Community College. In fact, I got some really good news. I've been pushing and pushing for Woodland to allow our high school students to get EMT course dual enrollment. Right now, we got lucky, well, not lucky. We're fortunate enough to have amazing leaders here in their community, where our fire district helped out with the Conocda Unified School District to start the EMT courses, but they're not dual enrolled through a community college, so they don't get college credits. After enough conversations and enough trying to prove that a 17-year-old can take these courses, it looks like Woodland Community College, actually Yuba Community College District as a whole, so both Yuba College and Woodland, have seen that it is appropriate for a 17-year-old to take these courses, especially since the state exam can be taken by somebody under the age of 18. They just don't get their certification until then. So there seems to be some motion in the wheels to get that accomplished, so that we can provide dual enrollment classes and get college credits to our students who choose to take those classes. So that's exciting. Meeting with Vice Chair later on in the day, and then our CHNA Initial Planning Series will start that Friday as well. And then I will have Food Policy Council, and there's a whole lot to speak and, and bring back all the information that I've collected from our trip over to Washington, DC. Haven't met since that excursion, and so looking forward to that meeting. And then, let's see here, going to have a meet and greet with our new Health Services Director, and on Monday, meet with our CAO in preparation for Tuesday. And that's all that I have. And I may, if Vice Chair Crandall doesn't mind, continue and go back on the Town Hall trail and support PEG with the videography that is going on. I know there's been a little bit of hiccups here and there. I think especially with Zoom, and I just want to kind of check in and see if there's anything that I can do to help with the technology.
Support, so I, I see, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I, I'm going to be doing a annual report soon for PEG to the board and to both city councils. And at that point, I think it would be opportune, a moment, to kind of get a feedback from supervisors on how that is working, and any changes that you might want to see happen in order to be able to continue that, as long as there's that benefit. So that's all that I have for calendars at this moment in time. We are going to go back into closed session. Our last closed session item is Conference with Labor Negotiator, County Negotiators, Susan Parker and Pam Samick, Employee Organization, LCDDAA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSCA, and LCSMA. And with that, we are going to go into closed session. Thank you for joining us today.